Good evening, everyone. Wow, that's loud. Quite the opposite. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, June 10th, 2025 City Council meeting. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Echols, would you like to lead us?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution that stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I don't have Wi-Fi. Sorry, we're trying to get our Wi-Fi up. Who's got it? Thank you. We will move into Closed Session Report. City Manager Kimball, Mr. Schultz isn't here this evening.
Madam Mayor and the members of City Council, the council medical session discussed the two items. Staff has received the directions and there's no, there's no report out.
Thank you, Ms. Kimball. Moving on to Councilmember reports. Announcements. Start down to my left with you, Councilmember Edwards.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things tonight. One is wanted to let people know that if you like the arts, theater, like I do, By the Sea Productions is going to be doing performances of Oscar Wilde's comedy, The Importance of Being Earnest. It begins June 13th. We'll go through the 29th. Performances are Friday and Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 3:00. Tickets are $25, and the number that you can call is 805-776-3287. If you like theater, I highly recommend it. It's our local one. I wanted to address, we are going to be looking at some core services tonight, which is things that the city provides, but I'd like to address a healthcare challenge that we have. We are going to be, as a community, facing the loss of Rite Aid and our pharmacy at the end of this month. And this can create a large challenge for us to be able to access our prescriptive drugs and other preventative care. So I recognize this is a frustrating, confusing time. I've actually stood in line there at Rite Aid. It is, you know, it's, it's, it's a very difficult thing, and I'm hoping that we can create a little bit of ease here with transferring over for people from Rite Aid or to another local pharmacy. So I'd like to address a couple of our current options and give you some info now, if I may. Our new pharmacy, which will be our only local pharmacy in town, is called Pill Save. It's located at 3118 Main Street, Suite B in North Morro Bay. I'm going to give you the phone number. I'm going to do this for a reason. I spoke with the owner, who is also the pharmacist there. He's a wonderful guy. His name, he goes by Eddie. His name is Edward Doss, but loves Eddie. The pharmacy hours are from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM on the weekdays. They are not open on the weekends. So if there is an emergency and need for delivery, they can do that. They can provide that from their Aurora Grande location, but just know there are currently no deliveries. They will be working on making that happen, but when I was speaking to Eddie, he said, please, please let the community know that the sooner you transfer as a patient, as soon as you can, the better. They're going to be inundated with a lot of people trying to do it all at once by the end of the month. And he does believe that information transfer is going to be very complicated, if at all possible. So I highly recommend you go over and do that. There are a couple, couple other options, but they're a little bit different in nature. One in Los Osos is the Rexall. I do want to let you know, my, my husband is a physician, so I did get this information from him, and it is accurate. The pharmacist over there is no longer going to be accepting new patients, which is unfortunate at this time because they are now overwhelmed by the amount of people coming in. So they're just trying to play catch-up. If you're not aware, there is a pharmacy within Ralph's over in Los Osos, and I have a client who's a former pharmacist who speaks very good things about Joe over there. So that is an option in Los Osos. And lastly, locally, Cayucas Pharmacy, and Greg Flores over there is the pharmacist. They will no longer be accepting insurance, but they are taking new patients. They're happy to give quotes on, on medications, but they are also going to be mainly focused on compounding. So I just wanted to give out that information to you. If you have any questions about it, feel free to contact me at my government email. Thank you.
Echols?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're getting used to our new digs here, getting settled in. I have a few items to report to you, the public on with regard to constituent support items that I've been working on over the last couple of weeks since our last meeting. Continued input on the 41 in Main Intersection, and I'm glad to see that moving forward through the process. I've engaged staff with regard to the porta potties down on the Embarcadero, as well as other beautification efforts on the Embarcadero. So that is an item of interest and conversation that is continuing. I've also spoken to several constituents about the concern of fire hazards, residential fire hazards from overgrown brush or vegetation matter, and the city has engaged, city staff has engaged with several residents with regard to that. Many folks out in the community have questioned the red curbs that we've seen proliferate in town with the, with the restriping, and so the city manager has addressed that with several folks as well. And that's due to, of course, state mandate, basically. That wasn't our decision. That was handed down by the state. I've also interacted with many of you with regard to budget items after the workshop, and I appreciate your input with regard to our budget and what we're doing there. I did attend the Planning Commission, and I wanted to congratulate our Planning Commission. They addressed the item of the concrete plant demolition, and they did it just so very thoughtfully. And I'm the liaison for that group, and I just wanted to, again, call them out for doing such good work and working so well with our Director of Community Development, Director Singwald. And speaking of Director Singwald, I'm excited about the waterfront master plan kickoff. We've got a report on that tonight in our, in our consent agenda. And lastly, there's a, it looks to be perhaps a silent or, or flag protest out front with the pride flags. I want to thank the folks for doing that. It's a First Amendment right for peaceful assembly, and I just think it's wonderful. So I'm happy to see that, and I took note of the folks that were out there. And last item for me is I will be holding office hours, pardon me, office hours this Saturday from 9:00 AM to noon over at Top Dog Coffee. Top Dog has reopened, so I'll be in downtown Morro Bay from 9:00 AM to noon. Feel free to just stop by, or if you want to email me beforehand, you can do that also, but I'll be there to speak with any constituents that, to speak with you about anything you'd like to bring up, anything at all. Thank you.
Yes, this is a new vantage point to see you all from. It's, I kind of like this. We're all at the same level, which, I just have a few updates. I'm, Councilmember Lefay and I met with the Friends of the Morro Elementary nonprofit last week, and they will be meeting, they have, let's see, they have secured a contract with a historic preservationist and a land use attorney, and they will be assisting them as they move forward. And they're both professionals that are highly esteemed in their field, and they are going to be meeting at the elementary school this week. Director Singwald has made it possible for them to tour the property, and so that will be taking place this week. Also, I attended the WOMPAC Subcommittee meeting. That was really, that was kind of like an informative how the meeting, how the process will go, put on by Director Singwald, who did an excellent job. He and his staff really, they didn't leave, I mean, they just covered everything. It was very impressive. Let's see, some of the comments, and, and the Subcommittee itself is really, I'm excited about. I'm excited to hear what they come up with because they all were really engaged in the process. They all had great comments. Some of the comments that I heard were that the, the meeting should be at a time when, you know, all people can come and, or more people are available rather than at 3:00. Maybe, I think, one of the members said after like 5:00 or on the weekends, and also that to get more young people involved, to, to maybe use Facebook. And there were comments, let's see, that developers, when, when it's all done, that developers should know exactly what they can and can't do. And then also, I attended the HAB, HAB meeting where they discussed the director, the Harbor Director discussed working with PG&E to get new light poles from Cloisters to the Rock, and they voted on an option to recommend to council of the different, I think there were seven different options. So we'll be seeing those coming up, and that's, that's all I've got.
Councilmember Lefay?
Yes, I also went to the, welcome everyone tonight. I also went to the Harvard Advisory Board meeting last week, and I also had the opportunity with our mayor. She gave the presentation to graduating Morro Bay High School Scholarship Night at Morro Bay High School, and I represented Morro Bay Golf, Morro Bay Golf Club, and we gave out three scholarships to three deserving high school graduates. It was a wonderful affair, and I was glad that I was able to attend. And I also went on Monday to the swearing-in ceremony. Art Barquez of our Police Department was sworn in as a new sergeant, and that was a great ceremony for him and his family, and I was glad to be a part of that. Lastly, is that just want to remind everyone, June 28th, we have the Marine Swap Meet at the Triangle Lot next to the Maritime Museum. It's a free event. We have about 40 vendors. If you're interested in being a vendor, go to Morro Bay, friendsofthemorrobayharvarddepartment.org and get a booth. It's only $40, and the event is for free. So hope to see everyone out there. We have a, it starts at 8:00 in the morning. That's about it.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I was, had the privilege of having opening comments at Senior Tribute Night and sat with Councilmember Lefay. Those students that just graduated are phenomenal. They are definitely our leaders of, of tomorrow, but they are our leaders of today in this community. So it was a very inspiring night to see all those overachievers. I also attended the Morro Bay Police Department Promotion Ceremony for Sergeant Vasquez. Thank you, Chief, for including us. And Locog, I am the Vice President of Locog. We had our meeting last week, and the board voted unanimously to take on the remainder of the Environmental Impact Study for the Morro Bay Roundabout, and then they will be moving that on to Caltrans. During our meeting, we had a presentation that was done. We had requested from the Office of Emergency Services from OES, and I just want to share a few things with everybody. As we talk about emergency preparedness, there was a comment about traffic, who does evacuations and those things, and there's an easy way to find all that information. You can go to readyslow.org, and when you go to readyslow.org, you can also sign up for alerts at alertslow and reverse 911. So we really want to encourage everyone to seek out any or all of these options. When you go to readyslow.org, what you can do is you put in your contact information, your address, your community, all those things, and they will give you a zone. So it's really important to know your zone for your community, and this is based on, when they send out evacuation alerts for areas, they do it based on zones. So very important, we all take some ownership in this. RTA is part of it as far as helping transport because we have a senior facility and those things, or people who may not have transportation. So we need to take our own personal responsibility there to make sure we're prepared on our end. So reverse 911, alertslow, and readyslow.org. Please go to those websites and sign up. With that, I will move on to City Manager Reports and Announcements.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I have a few things to update the council and audience and the public on. First, we wanted to just bring to our attention a few progresses that we made at the federal level, and the, our, rather, our legislative advocacy updates that we received from the federal budget. On, on that note, and with regard to energy, it appears that there, there is no money for offshore wind, and Bowens proposed the budget. And then the House version of the federal budget bill also eliminate test credit for renewable energy projects. So we were told that if for, if consumers, you are, you are taking advantage of incentive for EVs and things like that, you wanted to make sure that you are able to take advantage of it before, before those incentives and soon. And then on the federal level also, and the Senate version of the federal budget bill includes a coastal guard provision, which includes $24.6 billion for improvements related to coastal guards and infrastructure. This is significant for us because of our harbor needs, and our staff and Public Works and Harbor Department are closely tracking the improvement, the involvement of this, this, this version of the federal budget. And on the state level, we had, the city had issued two opposition letters so far, and one is letter, opposition letter to SB 79, and the other is SB 254. And we are, of course, are continuing monitoring the development of both bills since they are going to, as they going through the, their process. And we, as indicated earlier, we do made progress on our, on some of our lobby efforts, and one of those has been indicated by our FEMA, FEMA claims, that the final notice we, we sent it out, we sent out the two notices for two harbor-related claims, and we receive, I received some comments from the general public. Just want to clarify that these notices are the last step. We have to go through the FEMA's, FEMA assistance process, and hopefully we'll, we'll receive some money from this process. And we're continuing working with our state representative on it, and really, the Public Works Department, the engineers, has done a tremendous job to ensure that we are keeping track of our claims that we submitted after 2023 storm. And then another good news I, I heard was that we, regarding to Wharf Recycle Water, the financing end, the city was awarded the Title 16 grant agreement from the Bureau of Reclamation for over $9 million for recycled water, and that, that intent was given to us in 2022. And three years later, April of this year, we actually received the agreement. So now we are able to submit for reimbursement. So that's a, that's a progress. And earlier, as mentioned by several council members, last, last week, the first WOMPAC meeting had, had their meeting, and with that, I'm going to ask, ask Director Singwald to give you an update on that, and then I can continue with my rest of the presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Kimball, and good evening, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the comments earlier from council members about the first WOMPAC meeting last Thursday. So the WOMPAC meetings are currently scheduled for the first Thursday of the month at 3:00 PM in this room. As Councilman, Councilmember Landrum mentioned, there were some comments about the, the meeting time, and that's certainly up for, up for discussion if the council would like to discuss that. Further, I would just like to say the WOMPAC meeting, I thought it went well. I was really humbled just by the, the depth of knowledge and experience of the various stakeholders represented on the WOMPAC, and I appreciate Councilmember Landrum's, you know, comment that we provided a thorough presentation. That's really my goal through the whole waterfront master plan process, is to really leave no stone unturned. This is such an important opportunity for the city. I want to make sure it's a very rich experience, so we're really diving into all the details, understanding every corner of the waterfront area. And again, it's a wonderful opportunity for the city. So I know also on the consent agenda, we have the contract with the consultant Placeworks for the waterfront master plan, and I expect there may be some, some questions on that item, so we'll be available to answer those questions.
Thank you. In the addition to the WOMPAC meeting, other advisory committees met as well, and CFAC, HAB, PWEB, Planning Commission all had good meetings last month and a lot of information. I specifically want to give a shout out to the PWEB Advisory Meeting, which took place on May 21st. That meeting have so much valuable information, and I just listed a couple of things, a quarterly reports for reclamation program, draft a conceptual design report, and talk about the EIR amendment for the, for the Wharf project, and a updated recycle implementation strategy. There's so much information, and I listened, the video just became available, so I've been listening to it, and I find myself have listened to almost, this is my third time. I'm starting my, my third listening. It's just really, I have a lot of information. I pointed it out because I know the project has, is very significant for, for our community, and I really encourage the public and to perhaps adopt, to, to watch that meeting and gain information that necessary from there, and then some of them are going to bring back to the City Council in your upcoming council meeting, and it will be a good preview for what may be on the City Council meeting agenda. And I was just so impressed. I, I just have to thank our, our project team, which includes city staff and consultants for their expertise, and also PWEB for their dedication and engagement. It's just, I just really enjoyed that, that meeting. And then looking ahead for the next couple of weeks, we are CFAC meeting going to happen on, a special meeting on June 17th, and the subject is going to be the Revenue Subcommittee Have a Report. That's going to be very interesting. And then the, on the every reminder, the city office is going to be closed on Thursday, June 19th. This is our first time, you know, to observe the Juneteenth holiday, and then, of course, City Council meeting on June 24th, and the budget adoption is currently on the agenda, and then we're going to give the first quarterly short-term rental report and some, some Public Works related items on our agenda. We are, as we all know, we are doing a new arrangement here. I just wanted to, to clarify that on the, this, this facility, Veterans Hall, are going to continue be utilized for council meetings and the advisory committee meetings, and but there would be no rentals at this facility. The weekly Monday dinner is going to continue in this room, and then just clarify that there's no, no additional impact on the community center. I know we have been back and forth about that. I want to clarify, this is, all our Brown Act meetings are going to continue in this room. Monday dinner are going to be continued. We're not moving around to the other facility, the community center. So lastly, and this is my last slide, I, there's always some good things happening in the city. Earlier, Councilmember Echols talked about red curb. Here we go. We have our, our seasonal firefighters are helping, in this picture, helping with painting the red curbs. This is a collaboration between the Fire Department and the Public Works Department, and when they are not doing training, the firefighters, they help with painting the curbs. And for kids, it's the summer started, so please sign up for this very popular program that our Recreation Division hosts every year, the Kids Camp and so on and so forth. We have a lot of programs offered for kids and adults, so just go on city website and sign up, and we, we welcome you, we want you to enjoy these programs. That's my update. Thank you.
Thank you very much, City Manager Kimball. Yes, I will agree at that Public Works Advisory Meeting, there was a lot of ground to cover, and the technical knowledge of those board members is amazing. I was very impressed. I believe we have no, any Subcommittee reports?
Mayor, would you like to hear a more, a more elementary school?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Singwald, thank you.
Okay, so on June 5th, the council's Morro Elementary Subcommittee had a productive meeting. So I'm going to read off six action items that came out of that meeting. So first, as Councilmember Landrum mentioned during council updates, we did coordinate for a tour of the schoolhouse with representatives from the Friends of Morro Elementary nonprofit. That tour will be happening on Thursday this week at 3:00 PM. Second, there was a decision to allow one representative from Friends of Morro Elementary to attend the Subcommittee meetings, beginning with the meeting with a financial consultant next, on June 18th. Item three, city attorney will prepare a MOU outlining roles and responsibilities of city staff versus Friends of Morro Elementary as we move forward together to accomplish that City Council goal to acquire or, or partner to save Morro Elementary. Next, so city staff will proceed with ordering an appraisal for the property, so the district has an appraisal, and because we have formally notified the district of our intent to negotiate for open space purposes per the education code, we are going to, actually, I reached out earlier today to order an appraisal from a qualified appraiser. Next, city staff is going to prepare a formal response to the district's May 29th letter where they acknowledge the city's interest in entering into negotiations for open space purpose, so purposes. So we just want to write a letter acknowledging the district's letter and explaining that we're ordering an appraisal and kind of moving forward with those good faith negotiations. And then finally, there was discussion to have a tentative item placed on the council's closed session agenda for June 24th to continue a closed session, real property negotiation discussions. That concludes the Morro L Subcommittee report.
Walt? There are no other Subcommittee reports. We will move on to public comment. Public comment will be for items not on the agenda. I have speaker slips I'll be starting with this evening. I'll start with Linda Winters, and then I will follow with the four members, Sherry, Mandy, Andrea, and Echol. React. React.
Sorry for the slowness, I've been pulling weeds all morning. I am on sensory overload for the last five, actually, from last Tuesday. I had the great privilege to be at the grad scholarship evening. And I helped to present six scholarships from the Lions Club. But what was not mentioned about that particular scholarship meeting was 55 organizations put together scholarships for approximately 40 students to the sum total of $197,000. I think that's incredible. Way to go, Morro Bay. You know, that's like the very, very best. I am also very pleased to say that we are sharing, we as in the Monday night dinner organization are sharing this very same room. We had our last dinner, I shouldn't say last dinner, that sounds bad. We had our dinner last night at, from 4:30 to 6:00, and we hosted over 84 people that came through the doors. And we served a delicious meatloaf dinner. And there was an organization set up outside that had a van that was offering testing for HIV and Hep C and something else, but I don't remember what it was. So we were very pleased to have the meeting here. And I truly am on party overload because after all of the graduation parties, then Sunday night at the community center, we had the benefit for the Alt- at the community center for the Altadena senior centers. And I hope they raised tons and tons of money because it was really good. And thank you for all the help in the back. Okay, I'm going back and taking my seat. Thank you for hearing me out.
Hi, I'm Sherry Hayfer. I'm a director of React Alliance. And we're going to give you a presentation about Dog Beach and its relationship with offshore wind. So, wait, first slide, Steve. So I just want to tell you that this is a picture by a professional photographer. Shoot, I lost my thing. Her name's Kathy Riederman. And it's a picture of Dog Beach. It's open space between Cayucus and Morro Bay. And it's really popular for walking your dog, or swimming, or shore fishing, you know, what people do at the beach. Okay, next slide. So this property was owned and managed by Chevron since 1929. The terminal stored and loaded crude oil from the Central Valley until 1999. Over the last decade, they have subdivided portions of their land holdings and sold off several parcels. The County of San Luis Obispo, City of Morro Bay, and a coalition of nonprofit partners, including the Land Conservancy of San Luis Obispo, Trust for Public Land, and Morro Bay Open Space Alliance, came together in 2018 with a vision for the Chevron lands that sought to protect open space and wildlife habitat, preserve the area's scenic view shed, and provide public access. The name of the acquisition project is Turo Creek County Park. It is a three-phase plan shown here in blue, orange, and red. Next slide. Phase one in blue, which includes Dog Beach parcels, was completed in 2021 using funds granted from Proposition 1, the Water Quality, Supply, and Infrastructure Improvement Act of 2014, and the Habitat Conservation Fund created by California Wildlife Protection Act in 1990. Next slide. The irrevocable offer to dedicate title in fee and declaration of restrictive covenants of these Dog Beach parcels was granted to the City of Morro Bay, October 12th, 2021, through the California State Coastal Conservancy. I will provide, there's a hard copy of it in front of you. Next slide. The restrictive covenants of the Dog Beach property permanently prohibit all future residential and commercial development and require the property solely to be used for acquisition purposes. These purposes include to restore important species and habitat, protect water quality, and develop a more resilient and sustainable managed water system, restoration enhancement of aquatic habitat for spawning and rearing salmonoids and riparian habitat, protect sensitive habitat for federally threatened steelhead trout, red-legged frogs, and endangered tidewater goby, and provide public access consistent with these purposes.
Hello, good evening. Nicole Dorfman, I am also a director for React Alliance, so I'll take it from here. So Atlas Wind, which is the project via Equinor that's been proposed here. So this was the proposal that they made to the California Coastal Commission to bring their transmission lines in at Morro Bay and also at Diablo Canyon. So this was what was proposed. Next slide, please. But what happened is they ruled out Diablo because of the Point Bouchon protected area. So this is what was actually, so here's, it blew up where is in Morro Bay. So you can see this whole area. The next slide, I think, will be a better. So there we go. So that pink line is what was approved by the coastal commission. So they said no Diablo Canyon. It's all going to come in here to Dog Beach, as Sherry was laid out. So one of the problems is, and by the way, this Atlas Wind was given coastal development permit July 12th, 2024, to do site survey mapping to see where they're going to lay their transmission lines. That pink area is where they were approved to do that. However, it was a very rushed process. They actually tried to do it via de minimis waiver, saying that there's absolutely no chance anything's going to be harmed. We called them on it, and they very hastily created a public hearing. I think it was probably in record time, within a month or something like that. So with that rushed approval, we believe that they missed the fact that this area, as Sherry explained, has restrictive covenants on it that would not permit this type of use that has been proposed and has actually been permitted by the coastal commission. We are bringing this to the attention of the coastal commission, that we think this is inappropriate and incorrect. Next slide, please. Okay.
Mandy Davis, President of React Alliance. So what's the big deal? Well, it's a really big deal, you guys. These cables that are going to be coming from the substations are huge. And they are definitely high-energy cables that will be coming into the proposed landing site. These are not small cables. They are really gigantic. We have a really nice picture of that. What they have to do to be able to get those from the substations to land and eventually the substations on land is they have to bury them six to 15 feet. If it's on soft bottom, they will be jet plowing. And jet plowing is incredibly destructive to the bent湖community of the oceans, the bottom. What it does is it completely disturbs it. It kills all of the animals in its way, and it creates a huge turbidity plume that brings up all of the old toxins from that area. And there are numerous toxins in those bottom materials. If they cannot, if they can't do the plowing, what they do is they put it on the surface and they cover it up with cement. So this is a big deal, you guys. Next. These are pictures of real beaches where they are bringing in these cables. And if you'll take a look, these aren't minor projects. And what they're doing is they're bringing in these cables into the beach. It's a huge, they're destroying the beaches. And chances are, if this were to happen, and I mean really honestly, I can't see how it will with the covenants, but if it were, what they would be doing is not just destroying the bent湖community, the entire beach. And the potential future use for that particular beach may be absolutely destroyed. Next. This is a picture of one of the cables. They are gigantic, and you can't tell, but we have pictures of these guys, you know, that they're kind of sort of wrapping their arms around them. And when they bury these cables and bring them into land, this isn't the only time that there is potentially going to be disturbance. What ends up happening is these cables break on a very regular basis. And there are 90 offshore cable failures in the last seven years. So there is no guarantee that these cables won't fail, they won't have to go back in, do more jet plowing, and do more destruction to the beaches. These are really, really high-energy cables that emit giant amounts of EMFs. Next. So EMFs have significant impacts on marine wildlife, and especially, whoop, and human beings. So take a look, it can kill, it can completely destroy the spawning and the bent湖community, but also human beings on land. EMFs, no good for humans.
Slide. I'd like to be the closer tonight. Just to remind you, React Alliance is a nonprofit, nonpartisan, 501(c)(3) all-volunteer organization. For some of you, this information might be new, and the lack of transparency regarding offshore wind is a common theme that we've continued to see with a dedicated push from offshore wind proponents to purposely keep the public at bay and in the dark about the impacts from offshore wind. I think the slide that shows the cable landing picture is really pretty shocking, and it would certainly affect the beaches in North Morro Bay. While the City of Morro Bay, as you know, basically has no authority in federal waters where the lease sites are located, and minimal authority in state waters, you do have jurisdiction for these onshore developments. And based on the information that we presented, it appears that you have the final say as to whether or not these cables are landed in North Morro Bay. So getting to our ask tonight, and it's twofold. First, we ask that you agendize this item for a future city council meeting to discuss directing staff to send a letter to the California Coastal Commission about the restricted covenants that eliminate the option for landing cables in this area. And then secondly, we hope at the end of public comment tonight, you're able to just touch base on this issue. Next slide, please. And then I get to talk a little bit about our upcoming event. React Alliance is inviting all of you and all the members of the public to our Save Our Coast event. It is a celebration of coastal communities. It's July 26th at Tidlin's Park. We've got a permit for that, or we're getting a permit for that. And so we, one to five, and we hope that you add that to your calendars. We want to make sure that if you show up, you bring your dancing shoes because you can groove to Jill Night, and then you can boogie with the Zongo All-Stores. We'll have adult and junior beverages, food trucks, and information about offshore wind. The day will begin with a flotilla, and there's more deals, details to come on that particular event. Tickets are available for the event on 805 TICs, and we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Have one more speaker slip. After that, public comment is open without speaker slips for items not on the agenda. Kieran, you're up.
Howdy, it's me. I've been just really taken with, especially the last couple of meetings, listening to you guys talk about community. Because of course, as I'm sure you're all quite well, maybe not all of you, but most of you should be well aware, since I've been coming up here, community has been one of those things that I have been harping on quite a lot here and there. Let's see, I pointed out a while ago, I believe it was, I don't remember when it was, but there was that, that whole hullabaloo around, you know, evicting some of our neighbors from some private property and using city resources to do it. And one of you, I don't remember the exact quote, I wish I did, I didn't check it, saying it was one of the greatest examples of community that you had seen here and in your capacity as a city council member. And this has been something, it's been on my mind ever since it happened because, of course, real community, when you're, you know, dealing with a bunch of people and trying to, you know, take their stuff and get them out of their homes, you respect them by, you know, politely asking, hey, can we come in and, you know, help you clean up some of that mess? You just give them the boot and, you know, chase them off and take their stuff. And it's been interesting because I've been watching, ever since we successfully atomized the unhoused community, there's been a bit of an uptick in enforcement of unhoused living. Not only have I still, as I have before, watched the CHP helicopter, you know, flying around, giving support to the Morro Bay Police Department, specifically in using their high-definition and IR cameras to find homeless encampments along the beach and out on the sandspit. But a few weeks ago, I actually saw, I think it was CHP, had their plane. They were actually, the plane was going around and around and around and around and around. I mean, they were out there for a while around Black Hill, and I think it's pretty safe to assume the same thing was going on. And as well, the Community Works Department, you know, calling in the police and them just swarming this one homeless guy they found. And I bore witness to it. I was going to stop, make sure everything was, you know, above board, nothing untoward was going on. I always keep my distance, but I always bear witness. Unfortunately, I was way too busy. I just want you to remember that we are all members of this community, whether you like us or not.
Public comment is open for items not on the agenda.
Betty Windholtz, I have a flyer that Ms. Swanson's going to put up for me. This man, Arthur Tress, lived in Cambria for several decades, and he is a well-known photographer outside of our area. He's had showings down at the famous museum in LA that's up on the hill, the Getty. Yeah, he's been there a couple of times. He now lives in San Francisco, he's in his 80s, but someone had the foresight to make a documentary of him and his work. And he will be coming to Morro Bay. And if you could raise that flyer a little bit, maybe we can see the dates on the bottom, and that everyone's entitled to come to the Bay Theater. It's a week from Saturday will be the movie from, I believe it's one to three at the Bay Theater. And the night before, there'll be book signing because he's done a book of photos that's called The 100 Views of Morro Rock. So when he lived in Cambria, he would drive by all the time in his way to slow to his doctors or whatever appointments he had, but he would always stop. And he took 18,000 pictures of the rock. And out of that, he's narrowed it down to 100. And that's the book that's being celebrated, and it's called The 100 Views of Morro Rock. And so he'll be signing that book at the Historical Society in San Luis Friday evening. He'll be in Morro Bay on Saturday at one to three for his life movie. And then Thursday, back up a day, Abe Pearlstein will be interviewing him on the local radio station, so you can hear him on his show. So hopefully between one of those three events, you will come and meet the author and get a signed copy.
Good evening, city council members and staff. My name is Betsy Goddett Cross, and I live here in Morro Bay. And I'm speaking tonight out of deep concern and disappointment regarding the council's recent decision to stop raising the recent decision to stop raising the Pride flag during the month of June. Let me be absolutely clear, this is not a neutral act. It's not just the removal of a piece of fabric from a flagpole, it is the removal of visibility, of support, of belonging. It is a message, intended or not, that Morro Bay is retreating from its commitment to inclusion and equality. In today's political climate, where LGBTQ+ rights are being rolled back across the country, where school boards are banning books, states are passing laws targeting trans youth, and hate crimes are on the rise, this flag matters more than ever. It stands as a small but powerful symbol that says, you are safe here, you are welcome here, you belong. Importantly, Morro Bay's decision to fly the Pride flag previously during June aligns with the U.S. Supreme Court ruling of Shuttla versus City of Boston 2022. In that unanimous decision, the court held that municipalities may lawfully fly non-official third-party flags, as when cities raise a Pride flag or national flags for communities, so long as the flagpoles are managed under neutral, consistent policies. In other words, the Pride flag isn't just a gracious invitation to LGBTQ+ communities, it's firmly grounded in First Amendment's Jewish prudence and reflects responsible inclusion governance. This isn't just any symbolism, it's about values. Morro Bay should be a city that leads with compassion, not hesitation, that celebrates diversity rather than avoiding it for the sake of appeasement or so-called neutrality. We don't become more inclusive by being silent. Silence is, in this case, silence in this case is complicity. To the LGBTQ+ youth in our community, to our neighbors, our coworkers, our family members, I want to say what the city no longer officially will: you matter, you are seen, you are valued. I urge this council to reconsider this decision, not just because it's the right thing to do, but because we raise a flag for, because who we raise a flag for reflects who we are as a city, and right now, Morro Bay can and should do better. Thank you. And I realize that this discussion happened, but I was gone, so I just wanted to state my views. Thank you. And I say thank you also for all that you guys do. I appreciate you.
Anyone else for public comment for items not on the agenda?
Hi, my name is Margaret Carmen. Hello, everyone. I want to apologize, because I said probably over two years ago, I was gonna bring information to the council on the absolutely detrimental effects of EMFs. And I had failed to do that, because we've had so many pressing issues in this city. And now, the wonderful women at React have brought it to your attention about EMFs. And I don't have all the data I should have to stand up here, but I'm just gonna give you something to think about before you vote on the budget. I've been told by other people on the Advisory Financial Board that there's some monitoring that the police department is asking for, something to do with data, et cetera. I can't, I don't know the details, but it's gonna require more cell towers, or at least that's what I've been told. And I just want to say, we've gotta start thinking about, every time you put up a cell tower, what it's doing to your body, your body, your body, everyone's body, and especially the children. I mean, if we could see right now in our bodies, we are on fire with EMFs right now. The country of Sweden, over 20 years ago, in their medical diagnosing, they knew that at least 5% of the population was highly sensitive to EMFs. We don't ever say in our American medical model that anybody's sensitive, but it's just not true. So when you're thinking about passing that, to have that new monitoring that I hear is not a requirement, it's just a suggestion at the state level to please think about our health and not approve it. Thank you.
Good evening, Jamie Irons, resident Morro Bay. And the remarks and everything, was there gonna be any clarification on the email sent about the police chief and the evacuation? Is there gonna be any remarks on that? I'll read my email, then.
We'll answer questions at the end of public comments tonight.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, I'll read my email. This email was submitted to council, and there goes as follows. At the May 27th city council meeting, Councilmember Landrum stated during questioning Caltrans' office chief of the project management district five, Joe Irwin, that the Morro Bay Police would not do traffic control in the event of emergency evacuation, and this was at the 41 Main Street. This statement by Councilmember Landrum was met with an audible dismay of the, by the audience in which we were attending, and our police chief was not able to afford the opportunity to explain in this, which is why we submitted the email. Given the importance of emergency preparedness to all the residents, we reached out to Chief Watkins to follow up on this issue, which was clarified pursuant to the city's emergency management plan that is updated each year through the County Office of Emergency Services. There are specific roles assigned to the police department and other public safety agencies and partners. In the event of emergency evacuation, the California Highway Patrol is assigned as the primary lead agency responsible for traffic flow. Mr. Irwin stated this during the meeting. We think it's important that the record be corrected and that Chief Watkins be given the opportunity to clarify this point. That's why I submitted this. I think there were a lot at the meeting, and for those viewing all the council meetings, I think there's the importance of a clarification on that, which is the purpose of the email, and maybe you can respond later. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on items not on the agenda? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no raised hands.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. I would just say, Mr. Irons, I believe you got your answer from the chief, based on what you just read, that it's done through Highway Patrol, and again, I would reference everyone to check with OES for emergency preparedness information, and their zone, and it'll provide all the information for evacuation. And with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Public comment on items on the consent agenda.
Betty Winholtz, referring to item 7C, is it the one that has to do with approving the Placeworks? 7D, thank you for the correction. And I want to acknowledge Mr. Singwald for answering some of my questions that I raised in the email to you regarding some of my concerns about this committee and how it will be operated. Since this is a grant, and there is money, and one of the issues is setting up and taking down, and always having to prepare for the next advisory committee, that he explained that this meeting was put in front of the HAB, or another advisory committee, so there wouldn't be as much work for our guys that do the electronics. But I want to say that I think it's real important that the public be more important than the dollars, that we be available to the public in the evening, on weekends, rather than in the middle of the afternoon. It kind of limits who can attend, particularly people during the school year, maybe not as much in the summer, but in the summer, then people are gone. So I would encourage you to encourage Placeworks to make this a change in their direction. I would also encourage you to ask them to, when they scope their workshops, that they not do the way that workshops have developed over the last five to 10 years, where you do the little sticky notes, and do you like this, do you like that? Where I think what people really want to do is hear what each other has to say in their town about this particular item, or this, you know, what do we think about the Embarcadero? What do we think about heights? Do we want to change them? What about the extension down the Embarcadero as we go around the corner to Atascadero Road? There's, I think, more dialogue and less, for lack of a better word, play, that I would like to see those workshops done in that particular format. And then finally, the last item towards the bottom of this staff report, or that was presented by a proposed, was the fact that we do a branding and a logo, and in my mind, that's kind of treating a serious document as though it's something that you would find with people who promote the city, you know, that that's something you do for advertising and bringing people to town. That's when you do branding and logos. But I don't think you do that with a serious document, and that it needs to be seen in that fashion and written in that fashion. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment for items on the consent agenda? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no raised hands.
With that, I will close public comment on the consent agenda, bring it back to council. Would anyone like to pull anything?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to pull item 7D.
Anyone else? As for a motion for the other items, less 7D?
I move that we approve all items on the consent agenda, less 7D.
Second? Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilmember Echols, 7D.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. 7D is the item for our waterfront master plan, the contract with Placeworks. And I just have a couple of questions for Director Singwald, because this is such an important document that's going to be produced with such efforts over the next two years. I really went through that contract in detail, and I'll just say, I'm so pleased with, and excited with what this looks like it's going to be. Here are my two questions for you. One thing I noticed in the report, it wasn't in our council report, but it was in the WOMPAC report, under the primary objectives of the waterfront master plan, the third bullet point down, and this is in page three of six of your staff report to the WOMPAC, the third bullet point, the primary objective of the, one of the primary objectives of the waterfront master plan update, is incorporating existing information from other studies regarding the feasibility of waterfront infrastructure for offshore wind development. In particular, the plan would incorporate findings from Mott McDonald's operations and maintenance infrastructure feasibility study for Morro Bay. This study was commissioned by the county of Slow in partnership with the city and is currently underway. And I've got a second question that relates to that. My first question on that, Director Singwald, is I didn't, when I read through the contract in detail, there was the scope listed in the contract, but I didn't see that listed in the contract itself. So it was in your report, but not in the contract. And then as a bit of a follow-up to that, the, within the contract and the scope, looking at the EIR, the plan of action recommended by Placeworks is to do an addendum to the EIR, as opposed to a tiered mitigated neg-dec, negative declaration, EIR. So, which makes sense to me, but I was also wondering, relating that back to the first question, if we're looking within the scope of this, of offshore wind infrastructure, it seems like there might be some conflict there. So if you could address those two items, please, just the mention of incorporating existing information, and maybe it's just that information regarding the feasibility of waterfront infrastructure for offshore wind development, when that's not in the contract, the scope of the contract. And then maybe just expand a little bit on Placeworks' recommendation in terms of how we approach the EIR, the amendment.
Sure. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Echols. So the first part of the question is pretty easy to respond to and straightforward, and that is, you know, council direction, when we brought the Coastal Commission grant scope of work last year, was very clear that the scope should include some evaluation of future operations and maintenance infrastructure for offshore wind development along the Embarcadero. And that was reflected in the request for proposals, and that was also reflected in Placeworks' original proposal. It may have been inadvertent omission to exclude that reference to looking at that offshore wind infrastructure, you know, consistent with the Mott McDonald's study that the county has commissioned. So I did discuss that with the Placeworks' project manager, Amy Sinsheimer, who's in the audience here in the front row, and she acknowledged that was always the intent to include that in the scope, and will make sure to revise the final scope of work that goes with the contract to reflect that. So that part is fairly straightforward. The sequo question is a little more nuanced. I will start by saying that that wasn't necessarily a proposal by Placeworks, so kind of given some of our budgetary constraints, given the fact that, you know, Plan Morro Bay and the EIR for Plan Morro Bay is the overarching, you know, land use policy structure for the city, it would make sense that the waterfront master plan that is adopted is going to be consistent with Plan Morro Bay, not involve land use or zoning changes, and therefore, we should be able to just prepare an EIR addendum as the environmental determination. If for whatever reason, a new environmental impact report is required for Plan Morro Bay, that would be a very expensive endeavor. So that is, to an extent, going to kind of determine the scope of the waterfront master plan update, that it needs to fall under the Plan Morro Bay EIR via an addendum. You do raise good points, Councilmember Echols, you know, regarding the implications of looking at offshore wind infrastructure for the sequo determination. I think part of the response is, you know, like you said, it is more informational. If we do start to go down a path where, you know, inclusion of, you know, policies regarding, or concepts regarding offshore wind infrastructure, you know, could necessitate a higher level of environmental review, I think we'd have to address it at that time. But at this time, that's really not the intent, is for it to be more informational.
Carolyn, since you're up here, two questions. This is, the study's gonna take approximately two years. We have one project that is actually going in at Coleman Park, an RFP was issued last week. It might just include a restroom, but in the waterfront master plan, since it's gonna take two years, and this particular scope of that area is part of that, is that gonna preclude us from moving forward on the RFP for the Coleman restroom? And then the other thing, you have scoped the marketplace, and I know we suggested that, in case, within the next two years, we do have an opportunity to develop that, would that procure us not to do that? Because you scoped that as part of the waterfront master plan. So just clarification on those two things, please.
Those are great comments. You know, the same comments came up during the WOMPAC discussion, and like you mentioned, it's not just, you know, Coleman Park. There's a number of very important decisions the city is, you know, currently considering right now, Coleman Park, you know, Morro Dunes, RV Park, lease extension, Market Plaza. You know, waterfront master plan is going to provide a very valuable, long-term, you know, policy framework for future decisions on the waterfront, but that doesn't mean we put everything on pause until it's done. Like I explained to WOMPAC, I foresee it being, you know, an iterative process, whereas we make progress on the waterfront master plan, we can kind of check in with these individual projects that are in progress, but we certainly can't just put them on hold because they need to continue forward. I think for some of them, you know, strategically, we might want to consider the waterfront master plan timeline, you know, and how we move forward with these individual projects. I think the direction I got on, you know, Market Plaza from council was to hold off until we have more information from the, you know, master plan process, as one example of that.
I would like to know, so it looks like there's $35,000 left over from the bid, and I'm just wondering, I mean, that, it seems like there's probably gonna be a lot of staff time involved in this, I don't know. Is that adequate for you, or?
Yeah, great question. So there will be significant staff time involved, a lot of my time. A lot of my time, Assistant Planner Suzanne Tonner is going to assist in the project management. It'll require a lot of her time as well. In our coastal commission grant, we also included a 10% match, so $75,000 for in-kind staffing as match towards the grant, which helped us be more competitive to receive the grant. So we, we don't expect the state grant to be able to cover all of our staffing costs for this. I mean, to an extent, it'd be general fund, but we're not, we're not asking for additional general fund budget, but it is going to be covered by our existing staff. The $35,000, that was, you know, I calculated that based on 10%, or I'm sorry, 5% of the overall Placeworks contract amount, just to have an additional reserve of state funds that we could tap into if we do want to say hire an intern just to support our efforts on the waterfront master plan update, or if there's some additional out-of-scope tasks, or if we want to reach out to another consultant for a, a very focused item to provide support. I just wanted a small amount of additional budget for that.
So the $75,000 is separate from the $750,000?
Correct.
Okay, good. And then do, with, with all the money, due to the uncertainty of the state budget, is, do we have that money? Like, have we received that money? Or is it just?
It's on a reimbursement basis. So we submit quarterly drawdown requests to coastal commission staff showing our incurred expenses, and they provide reimbursement.
And is that guaranteed? Like, if, if they can't, for some reason, fund it, are we left responsible? Or how does, how would something like that work? Or is it guaranteed?
So we have our grant contract with, with the coastal commission, so it's more or less guaranteed. There's that, yeah, it's, it's the funding commitment that's been encumbered and guaranteed for, for the city.
Oops, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singwald. Appreciate that.
Thank you for the clarifications, Director Singwald. I appreciate that as well. Madam Mayor, I move that we approve item 7D of the consent agenda with the modification in scope as mentioned by Director Singwald.
Could, would you accept, like, considering changing the time? And I would second that? The time of the meeting?
I have a motion. Can I have a second for this?
Second that.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, I guess would you, would you accept a friendly amendment to, to make, I, I was, there weren't very many people at that WOMPAC meeting. There were, I think, four of us, all total. And it seems like we do want the most engagement possible, and I'm wondering if you would consider?
I'm going to jump in there real quick, too, and say, you know, based on the comments Mr. Singwald provided in his response, I would leave it to staff to try and make those arrangements rather than us. I, I don't want to incur any more expenses than need. And I think schedules are always challenged, whether it's morning, or afternoon, or evening. So hopefully, he's heard the concerns from the community, press him without us. Comment?
Yes, I'll, I'll let the motion stand as is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, we have a public hearing item. Ms. Burlingame, public hearing item on the reported delinquent solid waste collections accounts.
Mary, yeah, well, I, well, Jeanne is getting ready. I just want to give a quick introduction on this one. This is kind, this is an annual, is an annual event we do. And very interestingly, it's very effective, this tool to, this, this approach to make sure that all the repairs are submitting their, their rates. And so then, and I also learned that it's a very thoughtful process. I'm sure Jeanne is going to, in her presentation, she's going to, going to give you more detail on the, how thoughtful this process has been. With that, Jeanne, please.
All right, thank you, and good evening. Let me just get the presentation up real quick. And so a little bit of background on the process. Both the city's municipal code, as well as a couple of different government code sections, detail the, the process for collection of delinquent solid waste accounts that culminates in the public hearing tonight. Specifically for the city's municipal code, it details that the hauler will prepare a list once a year of past due accounts that are more than 120 days old. The hauler then prepares certified letters and sends those out to each of the property owners, letting them know of the past due accounts, the amounts, and a request to pay those within 45 days. After that 45 days, they prepare a final list that they submit to the city of those that are still remaining due. And the city then prepares a, takes that list and prepares a certified letter after setting the public hearing date, and sends letters out to each of those property owners, notifying them of the public hearing date, the fact that their account is still past due, the amount that is due, and giving them the opportunity to come to the public hearing to do, to make public comment or protest for the delinquent amounts. And also, in the city's municipal code, it allows for the addition of an administration fee on top of the delinquent accounts, amounts that are due to the garbage company. With the government code, there are a couple of provisions that are required in order to be able to place delinquent solid waste fees and charges as liens against the property. The first of which is to annually set a public hearing for the date on which the city council would be presented with a list, as well as giving the opportunity for the members of the public or the property owners to provide any objections or protests, as well as the city is to provide to the property owners within 10, 10 days before the public hearing, certified notice that there is a public hearing, the date, time, as well as the amounts that are to be owed. So just a quick little summary of the timeline of activities for this year. In March, the hauler sent out letters via certified mail to the delinquent accounts that were prepared, that were more than 120 days old. In May, the hauler submitted after that 45 days, a list to the city of six accounts that had not been paid, which were requested by that date of the 45 days. Towards the end of May, the city prepared certified letters and mailed those out to those six account holders, notifying them of the public hearing date, and the amount, that their amounts were still due, and the amounts that were owed. Before the staff report was submitted to the city clerk's office, the city staff, myself, verified with the hauler if there were any payments that were made between the time they had submitted their list to the city and when we had submitted certified letters out to the property owners, and verified the five accounts remained unpaid, and one account had been paid after the certified letters by the city were sent out. So that one account was pulled off of the list and is not part of the final list that is presented for you here tonight. And then tonight, we have the public hearing to present the report of the lists of the delinquent accounts, and to make a recommendation to conduct the public hearing, to receive a report on the delinquent collection fees, and hear objections or protests, to authorize the addition of the 2% administration fee, and to adopt resolution 3225 that would authorize the city staff to submit to the county auditor for the upcoming tax roll, those five accounts and amounts owed. It should be noted that per Health and Safety Code, there is a requirement that this be a two-third majority vote to have these delinquent charges be collected on the tax roll. With that, I'll turn it over to the council for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Ms. Burlingame. Appreciate that. Questions? Questions?
You know, I'm, I'm a little confused. There's five accounts, it's not even $1,000, and it just seems like we're going to, we're doing a lot of work just to try to collect something like that. So I'm just not really sure what you're asking us. Are you asking us that if these accounts that haven't been paid, then will be leaned on your property for your property taxes? Is that correct?
If, if the council adopts the resolution, that is correct.
Okay. So, so, but why don't we, why do we have to go through this whole rigmarole? Why don't we just throw it right there to the prop, and lean it? I mean, it just seems like you're going through a lot of work.
And, and this is part of the process, and that is required by?
Is it part of the law?
There, yeah, there's, the government, there's a couple of government code sections that require this process.
All right. So basically, what you're asking us is that you'd like, you're going to continue to do what you did. We have five delinquent accounts, and then now, we're going to take those accounts and give it to the auditor and the county, and it's going to be assessed on their property taxes.
Correct.
And I wanted to add that this is a public hearing process, so we need a held public hearing, and hear public input.
Any other questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think Councilmember LaFaye and I may be thinking along the same lines. So as we move, as, and I'm fine with passing this tonight, but I have some suggestions perhaps for staff later. Is, so this is an annual process, Ms. Burlingame?
Correct.
And do we do it once a year, about this time of the year, about the same time of the year?
Yes, the, kind of the schedule gets set based on when we need to submit this information to the county auditor for the tax roll, and then we kind of back the schedule up. So it's usually March of every year, those initial letters go out from the hauler. In May, we usually get the final list from the hauler, and then set our public hearing in June.
Got you. And in reading through the ordinance that allows us to do this, the state code as well as our own municipal code, I didn't see, I, I see a, a requirement of 120 days delinquency, but I didn't see any requirement or threshold in terms of dollar amount. And that's what concerns me a little bit, is the effort that staff is required to go through for $1,000, of which we garner $109.63. So could you affirm for me that there's no dollar threshold that, that needs to be met, just that 120 days?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing no other questions, this is a public hearing item. Any takers? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have one in the queue. Stand by.
Hello, my name is, can, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Okay. I'm Amber Castro. I'm with Waste Connections, and just wanted to answer their question about the threshold for the amount sent. We require the minimum amount to at least be $50 of the principal bill itself, and then that is, and then it has to be 120 days as well. Otherwise, there would be much more.
Thank you, Amber.
You're welcome.
AGP, any more raised hands?
No, Madam Mayor. That completes the public comment. I'm zoom.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment for this public hearing item. Mr. Qualick, you have something to add?
Mayor, I'm just burning to make a comment here, so I'll, I'll, I'll jump in on this riveting item. But I, I recognize the council's kind of interesting look at this, given how low some of these dollar amounts are, and why, why are we spending this much time on it? And this is more of a reminder that, yes, the, the amounts may seem petty, but this is one of those sort of motivators for people to pay their bill. We, we take the enforcement of this seriously as staff. As you can tell, we meticulously bring this documentation to you and put any unpaid balances on your tax bill. That's a serious thing, and that makes some people want to avoid it. If we didn't do that in, in the past, we haven't done that, then we have problems where lots of folks aren't paying their bill. And I'm not saying it would be outright chaos with thousands of people not paying their bill, but for anyone out there wondering, there are consequences if you don't pay your trash bill. So just want to leave my comment there.
Thank you, Mr. Qualick.
Mayor, sorry, Mayor. I, I wanted to address, I want to, I want to add to Mr. Qualick's comments, and, because I had asked the same question to Mr. Qualick and Mr. Burlingame before, this, the amount is not really allowed, it's not a lot, and we're doing all this work. And Jeanne has clarified to me that she's saying, just like Mr. Qualick was saying, in the past, when we're not doing these things, and we are not very effective, and, and some years, you, you have to write off, like, upwards of $20,000 a year. And so these fees, as you all know, these are repair-paid services. So if you have to write off, means the rest of the repair have to pay. So therefore, it is important to have an effective mechanism to collect the delinquency fees.
Thank you. I, I think, I'm just going to go out on a limb here, and I think our concern is, is not, I mean, I think we all want to be good partners with our garbage haulers. It's about the dollar amount and the threshold. And I think that, you know, as has been alluded to up here, there's an interest in looking at a different threshold. I mean, at this point, it would have been cheaper for the city to pay the delinquent bills than the staff time and everything else that goes involved with it. I understand the compliance needs, so I get that. But again, the threshold needs to be adjusted, if it can be. Questions? Comments? Excuse me, comments? Did you want to, I'm sorry, Ms. Burlingame?
I was going to say, and I have additional comment. After Councilmember Echols had, had reached out and had an inquiry about that, I did have a quick chat with Jeff Claren at Waste Connections before the meeting, and we did have a discussion of wanting to have a further conversation about maybe looking at the process, maybe not having it every single year, maybe having it every other year, whatnot, to alleviate some of the, the questions with regard to the amount of staff time, both for the hauler and the city. And he was wanting to take a look at the financial side of it to see what might make sense, and then if something does come back, to make a recommendation for some type of change in the process. Since it is part of, outlined as part of our municipal code, then we would come back to council, get, have that discussion, and then look to making changes to the ordinance to reflect that.
Thank you for checking on that. And I think part of that conversation, along with maybe the extended reporting, would be a threshold, too. So comments from council?
Yeah, thank you for those comments, Ms. Burlingame. Yeah, I, you know, an arbitrary number might be $500, but I don't know if that makes sense in the broader scope of things. My entire intent in, in bringing this up and having this discussion is going back to staff time, and just as the mayor mentioned, it, it would literally be cheaper for the city just to, to, to pay those, because the, the amount of staff time that it, that it's taking to initiate those six liens and then follow through on the five, I'm sure is more than $109.63. So I would, I would like to see staff, as you mentioned, examine some type of alternative. I don't know that it's necessarily every other year. I, I think the dollar threshold makes a lot more sense. I'm a little confused, because the city manager just mentioned $20,000, and I don't, if we've been following this process, there's no way that anything would ever get to $20,000, because we're, we're so diligent about it. But it just seems to me to make sense that if we had a, a dollar threshold, and I don't know exactly what that arbitrary number would be, that would be based on the analysis of the provider and, and.
Any other comments from council?
No.
I'm looking for a motion. Yes, anything to add, Ms. Burlingame?
Well, I was just going to clarify about the $20,000. So that was at a time when we didn't have this process that we do now, where we're putting the liens on. So at that point, the, the hauler did all of the, the, the reach outs and mechanisms to get the payment. They'd even used collection agencies to try to get the payments. And even with all of that, they were writing off upwards of $20,000 a year of lost revenue. So that's, that was what that references. And then once we started doing this process with the liens on the property on the tax bill, the amount of that lost revenue shrank, as you can see, quite dramatically.
$20,000 was from Morro Bay?
Yes.
Wow, that's a lot, probably because those rates are so high. Wow, that's a lot. Probably because those rates are so high. Anyone looking for a motion, looking, I'm looking for a motion from someone, please.
I would like to make a motion, if I may.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion to adopt Revolution Number 32-25, authorizing San Luis Obispo County Auditor to assess amounts due on delinquent solid waste collection accounts as tax liens against the properties.
Second.
And I think, Ms. Burlingame, you'll follow up then with the, with the hauler and find some other options before next year. Thank you.
Yes.
Some a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five-minute break before we start our... Thank you, everyone. We will move on to our business items, and I will turn this over. City Manager Kimball?
Thank you, Mayor. And the next two business items are fire department-related, and they are really going to involve subjects on long-range planning and visions, those, all these exciting stuff. And the first one, the standards of cover, we were originally hoping to schedule that for the meeting two weeks ago, but due to time constraints, and it was brought to this meeting. And originally, Chief and I were hoping that this, the standards of cover, and the following one, the one regarding the number two fire station, can be separated. So then, so then we'll have a, a bit of separation in between the two discussions, and it didn't happen. And so now we're all in one sitting, one happy family. We're dealing with both at the same time. The fire chief is very excited and pleased to, to talking to the council and the community about it. He's been working on it for a month. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief McQueen.
And Mayor and council. So tonight, I am presenting to you a summary of the Community Risk Assessment and Standards of Cover document that was completed to evaluate the fire department services. So I want to emphasize that the findings of this report do not mean the fire department is inadequate or unable to meet the needs of the community. This report should be considered a roadmap to guide department growth as finances allow. Some National Fire Protection Association or NFPA standards are codified and adopted, such as the fire sprinkler standards. Others are guidelines based on industry best practices. Very few organizations have the financial resources to fully comply with every guideline. Departments use these standards as goals to strive for and to help shape decision-making as communities evolve and grow over time. So for a little background, conducting a standards of cover was a 23 and 25 fiscal year council goal to evaluate public safety services to better help us plan for proposed development, changing community needs, and evolving industry best practices. Excuse me. A request for proposals to conduct the evaluation and prepare the report was released in November of 2023. Matrix Consulting was the firm selected, and the project kickoff meeting occurred April of 2024. The final report for the fire department was received on February 11th, 2025. The report for the police department should be nearing completion. There was a delay in obtaining the required data due to the differences in data collection with the sheriff's department that provides dispatch services for PD. I do want to highlight that this type of report is done periodically to evaluate services based on current standards and evaluate a city's needs. The last one done for Morro Bay was in 2004, and that ultimately led to the passage of Mazer Q. So what is a community risk assessment? A community risk assessment is a systematic process to identify, analyze, and evaluate a community's risks. It is a critical step in risk reduction and management, aiming to understand the potential hazards, either natural or manufactured, vulnerabilities of the community, such as socioeconomic conditions, public infrastructure, and environmental factors, and the capacities or resources available to mitigate and respond to these risks. Information in the community risk assessment is very similar to the items in the local hazard mitigation plan. The difference is this document uses those hazards and vulnerabilities to assess fire department performance and identify areas for improvement based on those hazards. Scope of this study included assessing the current fire protection system or operations, response capabilities, staffing, and other resources that were necessary for delivering services to the city. A review of services provided and delivery of those services should be performed periodically to ensure our needs are being met. This project focused on the emergency services system delivery. This document should be considered a living document that will change over time as other factors influence the city and the emergency services system. This report is broken down into the following categories. There's an introduction and an executive summary, fire department organization, a community risk assessment, evaluation of deployment and performances, development, excuse me, deployment improvement opportunities, performance objectives, and finally, a facility assessment. So I want to walk through the findings of the report. The items in bold are what the recommendations of the consultant were, and the bullet point below that is what we are doing to address these recommendations. So for the first item, establish a community standard delineating the services provided, response protocols, and benchmark objectives for the city's fire protection systems. So we began implementing the LexiPol policy and procedure manual in June 2023 to update old outdated policies. We have worked with the, we have worked to update the departmental policies. The city also complies with the San Luis Obispo County EMS or the agency protocols and procedures for EMS response. Those, those guiding documents outline the services that we provide and the protocols and policies that we follow. Formally establish a baseline performance objective turnout time of 1 minute 30 seconds for all emergency calls 90% of the time, is the recommendation. To address this again, as part of this policy revision with LexiPol, we adopted the NFPA recommended response time standards of 1 minute or less 90% of the time for EMS incidents, and 1 minute 20 seconds for non-EMS incidents. And these are for emergency or Code 3 responses. The next recommendation, work with the communication center to ensure adequate procedures and processes for capturing timestamps. So since the time of initiating this process with a consultant, we did upgrade our mobile data computers and all of the fire apparatus to eliminate the need for radio traffic to status the engine, such as advising if we're responding or on scene. Now crews push a button on the screen, and it automatically records the time. It cuts out the human factor of somebody listening to the radio and then having to type that time in. It automatically captures that. We are still noticing some data collection errors between apparatus times and the overall call times that we are working to identify a solution to. We're recording a number of incidents where the call times do not match the apparatus times, creating errors in the data. This is a work in progress to clean that data up, but we are working with the help team through the vendor that does our data collection software. Some additional findings. They recommended installing timers in the station at the apparatus bay doors to indicate the elapsed time from dispatch. We are evaluating an upgrade to the station alerting system. Due to the age of the system, upgrades such as adding these timers are not available, and we will have compatible, and we do have compatibility issues with current dispatch processes. An upgraded system should include call timers. They recommended posting turnout time performance monthly by shift to allow crews to see their performance. And what the turnout time performance is, is how fast the crew gets out the door after a call comes in. And we have implemented a review process of time performance during our monthly officers meetings to identify areas to improve, and the captains do review these times with their personnel. And they recommend creating a reporting mechanism for excessive turnout times to allow the evaluation of the cause of the turnout time delays. The captains have been reporting call time discrepancies to me and the deputy chief, so we can continue to improve data collection. Again, we're working with our records management vendor to correct this discrepancy, and we are finding ways to improve that. That being said, there is always time, or always a way for us to improve how fast we get out the door, and we are working with that. The crews do an excellent job of it. Those of you that have been at the station, and you hear a call come, and you hear the boots clumping down the stairs, you know, they do an excellent job getting out the door, but there's always room for improvement. Some additional findings. The city of Morro Bay should establish a 5-minute travel time benchmark performance objective for 90% of the emergency calls for service. Due to the travel time from Station 1 to North Morro Bay, achieving this time standard is not possible without a second station. A previous standards of cover report conducted in 2004 evaluated multiple station models, including 1 and 2 station models at various locations in town, including a single centralized station. The ideal configuration was determined to be a 2-station model, with 1 in the north and 1 in the south portions of the city. If the Benita Street Station was in the, in service, the entire city would potentially be within a 4-minute drive time. Finally, upgrade Station 54 to ensure it can safely accommodate an on-duty crew. The Benita Street Station used to be called Station 54, but the county numbering system has changed and will be referred to as Station 2. We have conceptual drawings and cost estimates for possible solutions to accomplish this recommendation that I will be bringing as the next item. Establish an on-duty crew at Station 54 to improve travel time in the city's northern section. If Station 2 was operational today, we could move 1 engine with 2-person staffing and immediately improve the level of service to North Morro Bay. The addition of 2 additional full-time firefighters is ultimately needed to bring staffing at Station 1 up to 3 daily because of the ladder truck. This is an area we will continue to work towards as finances allow, and it is a departmental priority. Just wanted to show a slide here that the consultant presented in their package, showing potential response time throughout the entire Morro Bay Fire Department response area, the entire city. And it's a visual representation of the recommendations of this report, showing the entire primary response area within a 4-minute response time on, on an average day with a 2-station model. And finally, there were some staffing recommendations. The final recommendations were to increase the minimum staffing of the Morro Bay apparatus from 2 personnel to 3 personnel to improve firefighter safety and the effective response force. Increasing the staffing level to 3 firefighters on each apparatus is a daily staffing of 6 personnel. The recommendation of the 2004 report also outlined this staffing level as the desired minimum level, but recommended a minimum of 4 daily and augment with reserve firefighters until funding was available for more full-time positions. The current staffing level is 4 personnel daily, 2 on each engine. The current department goal is the addition of 2 full-time employees, which would give us a level of 5 personnel daily. This would increase to 6 during the summer, when seasonal firefighters are utilized. Staffing of 6 full-time employees daily is a long-range goal to work towards as other funding opportunities become available. Just to put it into perspective, to fully meet the NFPA standard on apparatus staffing levels, we would need to have 8 people on duty, on duty daily, effectively doubling our workforce. A workforce of this size is not possible with the city's finances, but does provide a metric to strive for. Many departments do not meet that standard because of the financial obligations. And the last recommendation, establish a performance objective of an effective response force of 10 personnel and a 12-minute travel time. This is a little complicated, so I'd want to explain it a little bit more. Establishing this performance objective incorporates mutual aid from Station 11 in Cayucus. That's the Cal Fire Station there. That adds 3 additional response personnel. This does not factor in Los Osos or the second station that's in Cayucus, because the, their location is outside of the time limit for them to count in this evaluation. They still come to fires here, but they don't count for calculating for their response times. To meet this standard would require a minimum staffing of 6 full-time employees plus a chief officer. If we were able to add 2 full-time employees, we would meet the standard only during the summer because of the seasonal program. This is not currently possible with the general fund budget unless alternate funding is identified to support these additional full-time employees. Meeting full NFPA 1710 standards would require having a total of 17 firefighters on scene of a single-family fire within 8 minutes. To meet this would require a daily staffing of person, of 13 personnel due to the distance from mutual aid partners. Again, this is the gold standard that departments strive for, but very few are able to achieve this due to personnel costs. NFPA 1710 standard is a minimum of 4 personnel on each engine, but again, many agencies only staff with 3 due to budget restrictions. Most partner agencies in San Luis Obispo County staff with 3 personnel on each engine, but we currently staff with 2. Diablo Canyon is an outlier. They staff with 5 because of requirements by the Nuclear Regulatory Committee. County Fire currently has 9 stations staffed at 2, and 5 staffed at 3, and they are working towards 3 at all stations. All state engines are staffed at least with 3, and all other agencies in the county are staffed with 3, with the exception of Oceano due to the current situation with 5 cities' fire authority and the county taking over that contract. The staffing level is really needed because of the number of tasks required to be accomplished at an incident. So finally, I would like to summarize that this report is for council information to help drive decision-making when it comes to fire service, staffing, and operational needs. As highlighted in this presentation, we have addressed many of the recommendations and are working towards solutions for some of the other items. This report is a tool to help cities define staffing and operational goals for emergency services as city finances allow. I'm able, I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief McCrane. I appreciate that. Been a long time coming to update that based on the last go-around of standards of cover. And, you know, I applaud our department and, and your leadership, being in a community that is small in budget and limited in resources. The fire department just exceeds and excels beyond what many expectations would be. So we are very fortunate for the level of professionalism there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Councilmember Edwards, questions on the standards of cover? Nope. Questions?
One question. In Cayucus, there's 2 fire stations, that 1 in the north, and then the 1 right in, you know, downtown Cayucus. Is it, are they both staffed or not? And how does, how, what's the relationship between your department and, and, they're both Cal Fire stations, right?
They are both Cal Fire, but technically, 1 is county fire under contract with Cal Fire, and the other is a Cal Fire wildland station that's staffed in the summertime only.
And that's a northern station?
That is the...
I mean, southern station, I'm sorry.
Southern station. And we do provide mutual aid to them and receive mutual aid from them, so we do help each other out. We do year-round provide aid to each other.
Chief McCrane, just to follow on that question, you said that, that's, that station is staffed during the summer only, the south station or the one downtown?
The one that was just rebuilt, the southern station, is the, the summertime fire station. The one that is downtown is the county fire station that used to be the reserve or volunteer station in Cayucus that was taken over by the county.
And it's, it's manned year-round?
Yes. There, there are some fluctuations because of construction and things happening. Right now, I couldn't say today, because it's been changing, but typically, once summer comes, both stations are staffed.
Could you please elaborate as best what the window of seasonal or summer is?
Yeah, so as we're seeing, fire season is extending. It seems to happen a little bit later in the year, and we had fires even as late as January. But typically, we hire our seasonal firefighters middle to the end of May, and then we work them through the end of November, sometimes through the end of December, depending on how busy we are with mutual aid activity.
Thank you for that, Chief.
What is faster, coming down the stairs or coming down the pole?
Coming down the pole is probably faster, but you can't have any items in your hands, and so it is a little more hazardous. Typically, the firefighters come down the stairs.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public comment period? Items on this item, standards of cover?
Betty Winholz, so A and B are separate items. Great. So then I, I just have one question, and it's really a process question. When you receive and file a report from the chief or anyone else, are you consenting to their recommendations, or are you just receiving what they want, but you may or may not agree? Or are you just receiving what they want, but you may or may not agree?
Any other public comment on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no raised hands.
Thank you. With that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Chief McCrayne, did you want to answer that?
So from the Fire Department's perspective, when I present the Standards of Cover, it's a document that's used to inform council of national standards, best practices, and what other agencies are doing, and kind of what the expectations of the fire service are to help guide budgetary discussions and help frame those discussions as we're looking towards staffing levels and operational needs. It's not a hard and fast, you must do this, the recommendations to help frame that discussion.
Thank you for that clarification. And as you said, the perfect opportunity would be able to meet all those standards, but it's just not a reality, based usually on finances for most municipalities. So this is a receive and file. Thank you for the report, and we'll move on to our next item, and I will turn it back over again.
The next one, so thank you, Chief, for giving such an informative report to the Standards of Cover. And then the Standards of Cover actually, in the report, recommended this number-two fire station, which Chief McQueen has talked about that. And so tonight, really, staff just wanted to talk to city council about this vision, which has been in discussion in the community for many, many years. And then also, as far as the funding goes, Chief McQueen has clarification, which he'll present. And then there's some options for city council to talk through. And then if, out of desire, at the end of the meeting, we would like to see city council give some directions as outlined in Chief McQueen's staff memo. And then this is really something rather exciting. It's a long-term, like Chief stated, it's not perfect. We may not have all the funding for everything. It's a longer-range vision discussion. So with that, I'm handing it over to Chief McQueen.
Thank you, City Manager Kimball. There we go. So I want to make one correction to the staff report. I received some information from finance just right before the meeting began, so I didn't have a chance to send it out to council. Under the fiscal impact portion, development impact fees, I stated there was a balance of $38,466. That was what was left from the original project to look at design options. There, I was advised there's an additional $39,309. That gives me a total of $77,776 of development impact fee funds, leaving a shortfall in the design costs of $15,414, not $54,000, as was in the staff report. With that, I'll move on into the presentation. So again, good evening, Mayor and council. I'm here tonight to present a project that will address one of the recommendations made in the 2004 Ad Hoc Committee Report and in the recent Standards of Cover report that I just presented to you. One of the recommendations of the Standards of Cover report is to make the Bonita Street Fire Station operational and staff and engine company out of this station. Here I have a current view of the Bonita Street Station I will be referring to as Station 2. Older documents refer to this as Station 54, as it was known previously. This is a station back from the days of the Del Mar Fire District. A second Morro Bay Fire Station would be referred to as Station 2 now, to align with the current countywide numbering system. I just wanted to clarify that point, since this building is referred to by both names depending on the age of the document. So for historical context and provide information on the need for this facility, I would like to discuss two reports. In 2003, an ad hoc committee was commissioned by city council. This committee conducted a comprehensive study and a Standards of Cover report, known as the Flame Report, that was released in 2004. This report recommended a two-station model with one station on Harbor Street and a second station at San Yucinto on property the city owned that was designated for a fire station. A decision was made not to build that station or build a station on that property, and it was sold with the intent of using the funding to finish construction on the headquarters station and to also start development on a new station somewhere near Main Street and Bonita Street. The recommendation at that time was to renovate the Bonita Street Station and to occupy that until funding could be found to build a new fire station in North Morro Bay. The outcome of this committee led to the creation of the Measure Q sales tax, and a council vote to move forward with rebuilding or rehabilitating and staffing Station 2 at the Bonita Street location occurred in 2004. This was a 5-0 vote by the city council. The Apparatus Bay at the Bonita Street Station was rebuilt in 2006. The economic downturn around 2008 stalled the project after completion of the Apparatus Bay, and the living quarters was never addressed. Since then, the Fire Department's call volume has increased by 32%. Department staffing levels were finally increased up to the 2004 recommended levels in 2022. In 2023, the Fire Department issued a request for proposals to conduct a community risk assessment and Standards of Cover to evaluate Fire Department operations. Some of the recommendations of this report include rebuilding the Bonita Street Station, establishing a five-minute travel time citywide, and increasing the minimum staffing to six Here I have a map that shows the location of the two fire stations that the city currently owns. The headquarters station is located at Harbor and Piney. This station is staffed daily with two engines. The second station is located at 460 Bonita Street in North Morro Bay. It is not currently habitable or staffed. It is used to house fire equipment and apparatus. I want to take a minute to highlight some reasons Station 2 is needed that are not stated in the Standards of Cover report. Here I have some images from the flooding events in January of 2023. This also occurred in 1995, resulting in portions of the city being isolated for several hours. North and south Morro Bay were cut off due to flooding that closed Highway 1 and Main Street, as well as other roads in and out of Morro Bay. In 2001, 3,500 people were evacuated from the city due to an anhydrous ammonia leak. The San Simeon earthquake of 2003 caused damage throughout Morro Bay, including damage to the Harbor Street Station, resulting in the fire station being rebuilt. The garage of the headquarters station was built in 2007, and the living quarters was completed in 2010. Two non-electrical incidents related to the power plant included an ammonium bromide vapor cloud that was generated during a boiler cleanup and a major natural gas leak at a pressure-relief valve from a high-pressure 22-inch natural gas line located next to Highway 1, both resulting in road closures. I have also on this image highlighted the driving time, just from Google Maps, showing either five or six minutes from Station 1 to the Bonita Street Station. This was taken midday during the week and is usually a routine travel time. This time increases on weekends, holidays, and during high school lunch, start, and end times significantly. Anything north of Main Street currently, excuse me, anything north of Highway 41 currently exceeds a five-minute response time. So what are the benefits to the community of having a second fire station? Having a second fire station would allow the department to meet the goal of a five-minute or less response time to the entire city, reducing delays in patient care or fire suppression activities. This allows for an increased level of service to the residents of North Morro Bay. It provides resiliency to the city by having a second station to allow response from different areas depending on incident needs and also placing a station in areas that have been cut off from service on multiple occasions. Increasing staffing daily provides more hands to get critical tasks done to stabilize an incident. Increasing the level of service and having a fire station closer to service areas has the potential to positively impact the ISO or insurance services organization rating and the insurance rates to the community. Again, that is a possible impact. I'd like to highlight our calls for service. Since the Flame Report in 2004, there's been approximately 32% increase in calls for service, and we saw about a 21% increase since the year 2021. This increase in calls for service comes from many factors. Morro Bay has seen a significant increase in tourism since the COVID era, resulting in increased EMS and rescue calls. We have a larger population of elderly and retired citizens that translates to a higher need for emergency medical services. There are also many other potentially unidentified factors that contribute to this increase in calls for service. The map shown here demonstrates areas of higher calls for service with large groups around the Bonita Street Station and south of the Harbor Street Station. The darker red on the map indicates areas with the higher call volumes. Again, I showed this image in the previous report. This was provided by the consultant demonstrating the potential response times to the entire city. By adding a station at, or by staffing the Bonita Street Station, the entire primary response area of the Morro Bay Fire Department would potentially be within a four-minute response time, reducing the time citizens wait for help. The four-minute travel time was calculated by the consultant with their software. Google Maps, using real-time traffic data, showed five minutes the other day when I ran the data. There are variables based on time of day and traffic conditions, but again, the entire city would be in a much closer time limit. This change greatly improves the level of service to the residents and businesses in North Morro Bay. Another major benefit, as I alluded to before, is this allows for continuity of operations if one facility becomes unusable or isolated due to a disaster or other event. I do want to highlight just some travel time examples. These were current times taken last week using Google Maps midday on a Tuesday. Showed a travel time from the Harbor Street Station to Nutmeg Street would be approximately eight minutes. This time could be reduced to three minutes driving from the Bonita Street Station. Drive time from the headquarters station to Blanco Street shows eight minutes. From Station 2, that time is reduced to five minutes. On the next two slides, I have some images that highlight the current condition of Station 2. The living quarters is a masonry building that was constructed by Fire Department volunteers in the 1950s with no blueprints or plans. We have identified through ultrasound that there is some steel reinforcement in the walls, but not enough to comply with any current seismic or safety standards. The current floor plan is two bedrooms, a kitchen, living room, and one bathroom. All the fixtures are broken and unusable. The building condition is deteriorated and unlivable. Breakage in the structural masonry blocks is visible at the exterior of the building, as you can see in the bottom-right photo. Asbestos tiles are present, and due to the age of the facility, lead paint is assumed to be present. Here we have some more views of the existing facility, including the missing and broken fixtures, asbestos tiles, and termite damage in multiple locations in the roof structure. The configuration of the facility is not designed for 24-hour staffing of a modern fire station. On a positive note, the Apparatus Bay is a standalone structure that was rebuilt in 2007 to modern essential service standards in place at the time of construction and is sufficient for today's needs. The bay is 1,632 square feet and is large enough to house two fire engines. The only work this Apparatus Bay needs to be fully functioning if the living quarters were rebuilt is exterior paint and some organization. Now I'd like to move into some options that we have to address this recommendation. The Fire Department solicited architect services through an RFP process. The selected firm was Hunter Smith Architecture, located in San Luis Obispo. This firm was chosen to evaluate the condition of the Bonita Street Station and provide options for renovation. The architect provided three options. Option A is a remodel of the existing structure. Option B is a new two-story living quarters, and option C is a new one-story living quarters. Option A. Option A is a remodel of the existing building. This would allow for three bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a combined kitchen, living room, and work area with one small shared office. The shared office would allow for a work area for two personnel and is needed in the event of a closed-door meeting or training. The building is 1,145 square feet and will be reduced slightly further by interior retrofits, including furring the walls with 2x6 lumber to meet seismic and energy efficiency requirements. Staff is not recommending this option for many reasons. First, this footprint reduces an already very limited space to provide adequate living area for crew members, restroom facilities, office space, and adequate storage for equipment and supplies. Second, this option would still be a structure that is a mix of very old building and modern retrofits that do not sufficiently address the needs of the organization, potentially leading to future construction needs and costs. The estimated cost of this option is $788,411, but the needed structural retrofits must be fully engineered for this building, and the actual costs of these retrofits are unknown at this time. The retrofits include repairing the horizontal and vertical cracking of the masonry structure, horizontal reinforcement paneling, vertical rebar and grout, as well as wall-to-ceiling reinforcement. Also, as anyone that has done a remodel knows, once you start the project, there are always unknown variables that will be discovered that almost always lead to increased costs to mitigate the issues that you find. Option B is the staff-recommended option. This is a new construction, two-story facility. This is the preferred option because it meets all of the departmental requirements, including living quarters for three firefighters, as that is the recommended minimum staffing level per engine. This design is forward-thinking, anticipating future city needs and departmental needs as the fire service continues to change. A fire station will serve the city for the next 50-plus years, and this design accounts for that. It is a common theme in the fire service to build a station for today's needs and not consider future operations. Then departments are faced with renovation costs in the future. The intent of this design is to reduce the likelihood of needed structural changes in the future when construction costs are even greater. This option would be a 2,322-square-foot building, designed to meet all of the requirements of a modern fire department in a very compact footprint. The Apparatus Bay is 1,632 square feet, making the entire proposed station 3,954 square feet. Just to provide comparison, the administrative and living quarters portion of the headquarters station on Harbor Street is 9,844 square feet, and the garage is an additional 4,972 square feet, for a total station size of 14,854 square feet, more than 10,000 square feet larger than what is proposed at this location. This design for Station 2 would allow for adequate space for personnel living, working needs for 24 hours a day, seven-day-a-week operations. Having the living quarters upstairs allows for maximization of the buildable space on a very small parcel to be as efficient as possible. This design allows for office space for staff, adequate storage for the required equipment and supplies, limiting the need to leave the response area to restock equipment. With the continuous increase in the tools, safety equipment, supplies, and medications the fire service is required to utilize, storage space at a fire station is always in short supply. The estimated cost of this option is $2325,682. I would like to show the conceptual floor plans of the design to highlight how the architect was able to creatively use relatively small building space to meet all of the department needs. The ground floor has three small workstations for members to write reports, participate in remote meetings, and participate in digital trainings. There is a bathroom, storage area, and a small area for exercise equipment. The bathroom would be updated to include a shower for personnel to utilize to reduce contamination to the living and sleeping areas. There is also a covered breezeway in the rear to access the Apparatus Bay and be protected from inclement weather. The second story provides three bedrooms with lockers for uniforms and bedding. There are two full bathrooms, since this would house a minimum of two and ideally three personnel daily. There is a kitchen, pantry, and breakfast bar in place of a dining room table to best utilize the available space. The architect was able to maximize the space to allow for a fully functioning fire station in a very small footprint. This option is essentially a standard 1,100-square-foot house for staff to live in 24 hours a day on top of a 1,200-square-foot office space for staff to work. One design feature added to this option would move staff parking to the front of the building, expanding the driveway apron to allow for three off-street parking spots. The intent of this feature is to be a good neighbor and not take up limited street parking in the neighborhood for 24-hour staff parking. Parking options would be evaluated for the other design options, but are very limited. due to the parcel size. And finally, option C. Option C is the second preferred option. This design is a 1,410-square-foot new construction, one-story building, that is purpose-built for fire department operations. This would maximize the buildable area on the parcel adhering to required setbacks. This option does meet most of the departmental needs and would provide adequate living space for a three-person crew. This design provides a shared workspace for the personnel instead of individual offices. This option also allows for very limited storage space of, excuse me, limited space for storage of supplies and equipment, but would be adequate for today's needs. A limitation of this design is the staff parking would more than likely be required to be on the street. The estimated cost for this option is $1,455,851. To ensure the design proposed would not dramatically alter the character of the neighborhood, the architects considered other houses on the street as part of the design criteria. If the two-story option is selected, the facility would be very similar to many other properties on Bonita Street, including the house next door. There is also a 24-hour staffed ambulance station on Bonita Street about three houses up on the same block that has been in operation for many years. Here's just a couple more images on houses in close proximity along Bonita Street. So what are the next steps in the process? First, we need to continue with architectural services to complete design and construction documents. The total cost of architectural drawings is estimated by the architect to be $93,190. Once we have construction documents, what we have is it considered to be a shovel-ready project. And then we can apply for grants, loans, budget appropriations, and other funding sources. Once funding sources are secured and required permits are obtained, construction can begin. If the living quarters was completed today, again, we could move an engine staff with two firefighters to it and begin immediately operations to improve the service of North Morro Bay. Ultimately, there is a need to add at least two additional firefighter positions, since the ladder truck at Station One really does require three firefighters to safely operate. Again, this is a long-range goal, and we will work with city administration to add these positions as city finances allow. The addition of two firefighter positions would give us five firefighters daily and six in the summer when our seasonal firefighter program is active. This is a big step towards meeting the recommendations presented in the Standards of Cover Report of six full-time staffing. To summarize, we have three design options with cost estimates for the council to consider. We are recommending option B, even though it is more expensive than the other two. It meets all of the needs of the fire department now and in the future. By being forward-thinking and addressing departmental needs, we can build a station that will serve the community for the next 50-plus years. Option C would allow for a sufficient station to meet today's needs, but could potentially require further renovation as the city's needs evolve over time. Option A is not recommended for a variety of reasons, but if it was selected, it would meet the sole intent of improving coverage in North Morro Bay. The Standards of Cover Report stated the architect recommended option B to meet the programming needs of the department best, but this was the most expensive option provided. After a review of the architectural report, our project team agreed that option B was the best option for the city. Still, understanding the city's financial limitations, option C would effectively house the additional personnel recommended in this report to be located at Fire Station Two after construction is complete. For some perspective on fire station costs, the Harbor Street Fire Station was approximately $6 million to build, and the living quarters admin portion was approximately $2.9 million of that amount, and that was 14 years ago. The costs of other similar projects currently underway locally. Atascadero Fire is building a new Headquarters Fire Station at a cost of approximately $21 million, and they are remodeling a second station that was built in the 1980s and now does not meet current needs at a cost of approximately $4.9 million. Morro Bay is in a very fortunate position that we already own a second station, so we avoid land acquisition costs, and the Apparatus Bay meets all of the needed requirements without renovation. One contributing factor in the increased costs of this versus building a regular residential home that any community member does is the requirement of the city to utilize prevailing wage contracts. So finally, what are we asking for? What are we asking of the council tonight? First, I'm asking that the council affirm that it is the intent of the city council to redevelop and staff the Bonita Street Fire Station as city funding and departmental staffing become available. Second, direct the fire chief to complete architectural drawings sufficient of both the coastal development permit and construction documents and allocate funding of a total of $93,190. Again, this includes development impact fees and has a shortfall of $15,414 that would have to cover. Third, I would like the council to select a design option and authorize the fire chief to search for funding sources for the construction of the new living quarters at the Bonita Street Station. And finally, inclusion of this project in the city's capital project list. If it is the council's discretion to provide alternate directions, such as selecting one of the alternate designs, choosing to allocate funding for this project, taking no action, or whatever alternate direction the council comes up with. This brings me to the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Chief McCray. Questions to my left, Councilmember Roberts, questions?
Yes, thank you so much for that extensive report, Chief McCray. You obviously put a lot of time, effort, and thought into it, clearly doing research to the history of it, dating back all the way to, well, it looked like the 1970s when it was built, but at least hearing the previous council of, I think, 2003, 2004's kind of vote and where they were going with it, I definitely appreciated. I do have a couple questions. One was, when did the RFP go out for this, for the project?
The RFP for the design went out in 2023 to give me some options to look at the feasibility of doing anything with this facility.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And then you, the risk assessment and standards of coverage you were working on for the past month, getting the report to us, is that what I heard?
Correct, yes. That was a council goal for the fiscal year 2324, to take a look, because we had a lot of development happening, and just give us something to kind of benchmark the department.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Chief McCray, for the report. Thank you to our fire department members for being here tonight, too, for your dedication to our city. We appreciate you. Chief McCray, just one question. The estimated cost for construction documents of $93.190,000, that's specific to one set of plans, correct?
Correct, and that's why I'm asking council to choose a design option, because that cost would be doubled if we did two versions and so forth.
Well, and you anticipated my question. Would it, did you explore the possibility that would it necessarily be doubled or maybe just incrementally higher if we directed you to look, to get the construction plans for two options?
I only got the estimate for one set. I will go back to the architect, if that is a direction, and find out how much that cost would be to look at two options.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, Councilmember Landrum?
Well, on the subject of the cost of the plans, are they, does it depend on the cost, does the cost of the plans depend on the square footage of the building? So the three different options, I would think the cost would be different, right?
There are slight variations. The cost that I listed was the cost to do the two-story option. I'll come back with a total, but they're in the same ballpark for any of the three options. There's slight variations, though.
And then usually, like, my experience, an architect charges for the cost of, you know, getting the permits done, and, I mean, since it's in the city, that seems like that would be not an issue.
Yeah, so what this, what this cost is for is the documents designed for presenting to the planning commission, and then ultimately through the construction documents, once you go through those steps. So there's two phases to it. The permitting costs would be in addition to that, and because the city wouldn't be charging the city for permitting costs, we wouldn't have those.
Right, and do the costs, like, of the two new-build options include the demo?
Yes, they do include demo, and there is some contingency fees in there as well.
Okay, and then as far as the development impact fees, there was, what was the shortfall with the new?
With the new amount, there's a shortfall of $14,400, or, excuse me, $15,414.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lefay, questions?
Couple questions, Chief. I've had the opportunity to go to that station. I've talked to a lot of people in North Morro Bay. They are excited about the opportunity. As we've talked before, you're not asking us to fund this particular project, and so your recommendation of Plan B, how hard is it to raise grant money from 1.4 million to 2.2? Is it about the same amount of time effort, and it depends on the sources, or, in your opinion, would it make that much more difference to you whether it be to get a grant for 1.4 or 2.2? That's my first question.
Thank you for the question. So, looking for funding opportunities, there are lots of grants available. There's a multitude of funding sources. It's going to require a lot of effort on my part to find grant funding or, you know, donations, things like that. So the amount is somewhat irrelevant. It's still a lot of work to get the funding. So to me, the additional dollar amount to find the grant funding, it might delay the project slightly, but the work seems similar.
And the last question, in design number B, would there be any opportunity to have any community events in that particular building? In other words, a conference center for meetings or whatever the case, whether it be just for city staff or community members, just curiosity.
So this one, because of the size of the parcel, the station is not designed for public meeting space. It's designed just for crew operations. It wouldn't be a public-serving office other than for emergency response. The Headquarters Station is designed for that with the training room, the conference room, and the administrative functions that are located there.
So prevailing wage on these then is over $1,000 a square foot, $1,200, $1,300 a square foot, is that what it is?
That's what I'm hearing from my counterparts, speaking to the local CAL FIRE unit chief, the conference that he just went to. CAL FIRE is starting to budget at $1,500 a square foot for their projects. Atascadero's coming in roughly $1,200 per square foot right now. There are some variations in that, depending on the number of bids you get, prices, you know, tariffs, prices of materials, all of those things factor into that. But consistently, we're seeing right around $1,000 a square foot for prevailing wage jobs. They did estimate right around 900 for option B, and that was the prevailing at the time. And there are, again, variations depending on the number of bids you get.
So most of the reference has been to option B, and I feel like we have the Taj Mahal uptown here. We do, we're very blessed. The potential maximum build-out of Morro Bay, based on our, all of our documentation and everything right now, is about 2,000 more people, and then we're maxed out. So I'm just, you're referencing a concern for future needs, but we're limited in capacity. So I'm just, I guess I'm trying to understand that. You said the call volume, approximately 2,000 calls, 30% of it being from North Morro Bay, so that's 600 calls per year on the average, 600, 700 calls in North Morro Bay. So even if that were to increase, it's still going to be minimal compared to what the other side of town is. So I'm just, I guess I'm trying to understand the, it's a lot of difference. I mean, it's a million dollars difference regardless of whether it's grants or not, because there's still the maintenance required for it. Is there any consideration, kind of tagging on what Councilmember Lefay said, if you were to, if the council were to support the two-story, 2,000-plus square foot, is there any consideration rather than maybe a conference room, a shared public safety space, and not to speak for the police department, but, you know, they respond to the north end of town, and if they're out on Zanzibar and have to go to the bathroom, they have to drive all the way back uptown. Is there any, would there be any consideration of a little side-door substation with an office and bathroom or something for PD?
That was a discussion amongst the department as we were going through this design, was that could be a consideration, especially initially with only a two-person staffing and having three offices. There could be one of those offices allocated towards the police department to utilize. I have not had this discussion with Chief Watkins, but that is something that we've considered internally, as having that as available, an office space. And of course, our fire station is always open for PD to come in if they need to write a report or use a restroom or any of that stuff, but we could, you know, designate a space for that as well.
Yeah, I just, if, looking at the $2 million option with all that extra space, it just seems to me that they're in the same situation in a sense. If you have a, you know, major emergency, something catastrophic, they're in the same position, fire is with PD, and it just seems like if we were looking at that large of a space to have a public safety building, per se...
Absolutely, and we're happy to look at that as well.
Might be more multi-use for the community itself, so I'll hold the rest of my questions and comments, yes.
I forgot a question. So if the Apparatus Bay, I think you said it was built in '07?
Yes.
And it's sufficient for right now, but do you have any kind of estimate of when that is going to no longer be sufficient?
With maintenance, you know, it'll, it'll last, you know, 40 to 50 years. It's a, you know, a steel-framed building with stucco on the exterior, has drywall on the inside. There's not much infrastructure other than electrical in it, and a washer and dryer. So, you know, basic household maintenance, paint, repairs to stucco and things like that, and occasional, you know, electrical or plumbing work.
And there's, so there's no, like, equipment upgrades that need to happen or anything like that?
For the Apparatus Bay, not currently. There's, you know, roll-up garage doors. The only other piece of equipment that's in it is the exhaust system that takes the exhaust from the vehicles out of the building. There are rubber hoses that come down and connect to the exhaust pipes. Occasionally, there's maintenance on those as the, you know, pieces break or, you know, a blower motor might go out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One more question for you, Chief. Between your two options, your preferred option B and your second option C, I just want to be sure that I understand the staffing implications. So on either of those layouts, the single-story or the two-story, would they both meet staffing requirements the same, or would there be significant implications with regard to staffing between those two alternatives?
Both options would be staffed the same. Excuse me, staffed the same. Initially, it would be a two-person engine company, and then during the summer, when we have our seasonal firefighters, they would be at the Headquarters Station to give us three to staff the ladder truck. Ultimately, our goal would be to get to three people at each station to optimally staff both engines, and that's what the station is designed for, both options.
Great, thank you.
All right, I'm going to have a couple more, sorry. Could you tell me approximately what an entry-level firefighter costs with benefits?
Yes, give me just a moment. I'll pull it up here. So entry-level, step-one firefighter, current with this upcoming '25, '26 fiscal year, their base rate's $87,680, and fully vested with benefits is $154,566.
Thank you. And just to reconfirm then, our seasonal firefighters run about the same as the Cayucas May to November, December?
Yeah.
Okay. And then one other question, talking about the call volume, do you have an approximate number? You were showing the zones. What's... What's, what's the approximate call number for 1405 Theresa Drive?
I can pull that up for you. I don't have that number right off the top of my head.
I was just, I was trying to get, you know, I know that there's huge...
The nursing home is a large number of our calls for South Morro Bay.
Right.
And we fluctuate, you know, I'll have to pull up a number for you on that.
I know it's a lot, and I, and I'm just trying to figure out what that call volume for the overall picture looks like. And that being said, I also realize that we have a responsibility to that call volume, which takes us to that end of town, even that much further away, because it is so high, so...
It does. And then, just for comparison, we do average, it varies from year to year, 30 to 40% of our call volume is in North Morro Bay.
Right.
But then, 1405 Theresa, they go there daily, if not multiple times a day.
Yeah. I think I have that address embedded in my brain. Public comment is open on this item?
Betty Winholtz, I would think everybody would want to talk about this. I think the conversation, the questions, I really appreciate at the end, because this isn't just about a building, it's about the employees that will be housed in it and which will be ongoing forever. I do think we have, I was on the council in 2004 when we were doing all of this, so I know we got a really bigger building than we needed at the time, because it was the intent that we would never have a second station. Even though we had a committee for that, we knew that that financially would probably not ever pan out, and it didn't. But I do understand the need to respond to calls in North Morro Bay. And so, I really like option C, because I think you can't not choose an option, even though I kind of asked about the no-project option. But I think if you go with the option B, you're overbuilding again. And I think if we're going to go with two people, because I don't see us being able to afford three people at that station in any time, any time, in the next who-knows-how-many years, because your third person's going to want to be downtown, not out there, except in the summer, even though that's half-time of the year. So, I guess I want to encourage you to go with volume with option C, because it meets the need. You'll have two people there, and yet you have a room for three. You can then help with the PD or with the summer staffing or whatever. But I think, not just to look at the building, but the personnel, that this is such a long-term commitment and financial. And I know that we just paid off in the last year or so, the current building, and maybe there are more and better grants available now than we had back in the day, because, because it's such a popular item. So, without going any further, on that route, my question is then that I had asked was, do we even need it? Is it necessary at this point? And probably to even get somewhere in the next few years, it is. But can the timeline be slowed down? And I think it will be slowed down, depending on whether you can get money, and hopefully more grant money than loan money to build it. And then, again, how does it fit with the rest of our budget this year and over the next five years? I think you can't just look at the station, you have to look at everything. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on this item?
Well, I was, hi, I'm Margaret Carmen, and thank you, thank you very much, Chief McCrain. I was just going to get up and say what he said at the beginning, his other report. This report is a roadmap to guide us, and that the Fire Department delivers a high level of service to the citizens of Morro Bay. So, I want to say thank you, and that was at his conclusion, which I was going to get up and say, no, we don't need a Benita station. I'm still kind of in favor of that, but I do want to say, I'm with option C. We don't need to overbuild. And as I always get up here and talk about with you guys, and I mean it from my heart, the state is in financial trouble. We can't keep acting like we can keep building and building and building, because these grants are going to keep coming in. And so, I agree with Ms. Winholtz. We probably need to make this project spread out a little more to make sure, as the state is in such financial trouble, how are we going to be able to go forward? Okay, with that in mind, I'm going to say a couple of my things if you're going to start building in that area. It's a lot more sound with the neighbors, and do you have to have the siren on as soon as you leave? And the standard to have LED lights, which I want all of you to know, LED lights mess with your brain. They definitely mess with those of us who have cataracts. And so, you're going to put those freaking LED lights on top of this in the middle of a neighborhood, and I just want that to be thought about when architects are doing what they're doing. Because you drive over 41 now, and you're blinded by all the LED lights on the athletic fields at the high school. That's just what I want to talk about. And when he talked about the exhaust fumes leaving the bay, I don't know how close the next house is, and are they going to be noticed? That it's going to be, you know, how much is that going to decrease the assessment of their house? Because they're getting all the fumes from the Fire Department. There's just a lot of those kind of things that I'd like you to talk about with the architect if we're going to go forward. And, let's see, and everybody has said some really good things, and thank you for always listening to me, and again, and again, and again. Don't go bigger than we can afford, and assume the state's going to pay for it.
My name is Mike Groves. I'm the current vice president of the Friends of Morro Bay Fire Department. And also, just want to add a couple of other things really quickly. First of all, I'm retired now, but I had a 43-year career in EMS, the Emergency Medical Services EMS, not the other EMS they were talking about. Including 21 years with the Los Angeles City Fire Department, 17 years at San Luis Ambulance, and then I spent five years with the County of San Luis Obispo at the EMS agency there, writing a lot of those guidelines that you had talked about earlier with regard to response times and those sort of things. So, this is sort of my area of expertise in what we're talking about. Chief McCrain came and gave us a little presentation the other day in a meeting that we had regarding covering additional funding for the planning. So, talked about the $93,000 and what is now the $15,000 shortfall. And we agreed as a board with the Friends of Morro Bay Fire Department to cover that extra $15,000, so there's no extra cost to the city. We think that that's exactly what falls within our purview to do, that this is a long-term goal. Regardless of whether anything gets built or not, we need to get the ball moving forward. And so, this needs to be done first, so the Chief McCrain can then move ahead and work on getting the plans for whatever option you guys, you know, decide on. And also, one other quick thing, I'm also a resident and homeowner in Morro Bay, so this means an awful lot to me as well. Okay, this is my Fire Department. I can tell you, my time at San Luis Ambulance, these guys are my favorite department to work with, partly because it's home, partly because it's a very close-knit department, and would like to see them have the ability to respond more quickly to those areas in North Morro Bay, to help the citizens who are up there. We don't have time now. I can spend hours talking about the importance of response times in both EMS and Fire, and why that's really critical. Okay? Thank you for your time. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else for public comment on this item?
Betsy Godet Cross, I wasn't planning on speaking, but when it comes to fire and losing a house, I think the price would be cheaper to build and staff now than when a bunch of people are suing the city, or I don't know what the process would be, because they didn't have adequate coverage. I live in North Morro Bay, so I like the idea of another station closer. And the fact that I have lived through losing a house in a forest fire, I am definitely in favor of having something in North Morro Bay.
AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no raised hands. Oh, I'm so sorry, somebody just raised their hand. Please stand by. Judy, we've unmuted your microphone, you're free to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Thank you, Chief McCrain, for a well-done report. I believe that all of our firefighters deserve space and luxury, but we are a small town, so we want to keep that in mind when we, and not overbuild. As far as need, I love the idea of having another station. I am a little concerned about it being in the neighborhood, so I don't know if the neighbors can weigh in on all of that, and that can be taken into consideration. But I thought, and I'm sorry, I'm at home and I was multitasking, I thought I heard a quote of 12, the build-out being possibly 1,200 dollars a square foot. And I was just hoping for some clarification on that, because we're building a luxury home for 400 dollars a square foot. So, if you could clarify that, I would appreciate it, and my apologies if I heard that wrong. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Judy. AGP, any other raised hands?
No more raised hands, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Just because it's interesting, I think, to know about the 34% increase in calls, and have some follow-up on the demographics or whatever causes that. It just seems like we should know.
Thank you. Anyone else? That'll close, public comment, and bring it back to council. And I'm going to, I'm going to hit a couple of them really quick first. I used to work out of that station as a reserve firefighter in the 80s and 90s, so it's always been a fire station in that neighborhood. The neighborhood is quite aware. The engines don't roll out of the bay with their sirens on in the middle of the night. There's no need for it. Their lights are on, their sirens are to clear traffic, so that's just a misnomer all the way around. I'm sure the chief can address it in a much nicer fashion. But it's always been a station. I would think that the neighbors would welcome a new building there, because there's still fire activity on a daily basis out there. And certainly understanding, oh, and the exhaust, that there's, go ahead, Chief. It doesn't happen.
Yeah, so for the exhaust, we have an exhaust collection system in the garage with hoses that connect to the exhaust pipe, that connect and funnel the exhaust out and up of the, up and out of the building. And then, as you drive away, it disconnects as they exit the garage door. And then, we reconnect them as they're backing into the apparatus bay. If I may just speak to being a good neighbor, even at our headquarters station, where there's just industrial buildings around us, there is one residence to the side of us. We try to be a good neighbor. We wait till after 10:00 AM to do our equipment checks, where we're outrunning tools and things like that. We don't do it first thing in the morning. The crews do get out and work out and things like that first thing in the morning, and then get into the equipment checks a little later in the day, just to be a good neighbor.
And first thing in the morning, shift starts at 8 o'clock, right?
Correct. Shift changes at 8:00 AM.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions or comments? I'll start down with Councilmember LaFaye. Councilmember Edwards. Questions? Comments? Hmm? I'm tired. Sorry.
I didn't ask this in the first, the, you know, the thing that you did before this, and I just, I guess they're all, it's so related, I thought I would ask. What is our, do you know what our ISO is?
Yes, our ISO rating is 3.3X, which is excellent for a city of our size and a department of our size.
And that's out of how many, like, what's the scale of that?
It goes down to a 10. The best would be a 1.
Oh, that is excellent.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the X is extra?
There's two variations, and it depends on water supply and some other factors. So, they label it as a 3.3X is the category.
Oh, okay. And that, that makes our insurance lower?
It can, yes.
Oh, okay.
It's one of the factors that's utilized. So, the higher the ISO rating, the better the insurance rates typically. That rating looks specifically at response to single-family structure fire and capabilities, looks at dispatch services, training, number of personnel, the water supply, a lot of different factors.
And then, I found it really interesting in the report, and I think you've told me this before, that how much faster homes build and burn now? And I think that's just, and it's because people, everything's made out of plastic now, right? And I think that's good to know, and, you know, not only is that more toxic in general, just plastic, and also when it burns, if it burns, it is more toxic. And so, maybe we all want to kind of go old-school, and when we think about buying things and not buying so much plastic. Yeah, but that's, so how fast do they burn? Can you?
So, absolutely. So, that does speak to, you know, response times, and, you know, timeliness is important. With a modern-day structure fire, the survivability inside of a structure can be down as little as three to four minutes from the start of the fire, where it used to be 16, 17 minutes back when I was a child, because everything was traditional fibers, wood, natural fibers. Nowadays, everything is made of, you know, polystyrene plastics and synthetic materials. Burns hotter, and the smoke is more toxic.
Right. Which, and that, and so, that very thing has kind of made our need for a second fire station more necessary, too, because...
Absolutely.
16 minutes would be sufficient from the other station.
Absolutely. Fires burn hotter and faster now. And then, outside of the fire need, medical needs, you know, if a person's not breathing, the brain death occurs in as far as six minutes.
Right. All right. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, I just want to confirm a couple of things, following up on the question that Councilmember LaFaye asked you, with regard to grant writing and the amount of time it takes to write a grant relative to the dollar number on the grant. I've done, I do, in my profession, my daytime job, I do a fair amount of grant writing myself. And the amount of time it takes to write a $1 million grant or a $3 million grant is essentially the same amount of time. What can vary, of course, sometimes, is the matching funds and looking at the matching amount. But I wanted to emphasize that point. I'm leaning toward your desired option, option C, or I'm sorry, option B, because of that, because of that factor. The question that, oh, and so, as we move forward, and we found out tonight, because of the generosity from the Friends, essentially, the design phase is costing the city nothing. So, we've got zero expense tonight to move forward with the design phase, then my understanding is you would go to work in terms of seeking grant dollars. You'd come back to us at some point in the future and say, well, this is what I've cobbled together, and this is what I need from the city. So, am I, does all that make sense so far?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, here's, here's the key for me, too, moving forward, then staffing. So, I think that the actual facility itself, I don't see as an overly burdensome challenge for the city. I see us doing that. I see us getting the nice two-story facility there. But the staffing is more of a concern for me. So, once, once it's built, we would maintain current staffing levels with the objective of staffing up. Is that, is that true as well?
Yes, that is my goal, because I know the city's finances, additional funding sources are needed to fund new positions. My goal would be to move two-person engine company over there. Right now, I staff two people on two engines out of one station, so I could split them and improve the level of service to North Morro Bay immediately. The ultimate goal, in the summertime, I would have adequate staffing at Station 1, and then still have two people at Station 2. Ultimately, we're working towards adding personnel, knowing that's the long-range cost. That's, that's the cost prohibitive portion of this, of this idea. But that being said, for safety, for number of hands needed, that is a departmental priority. So, with that, we've really tried to maximize our impact to the general fund budget, the Q and E budget, by taking care of the additional tools, equipment things, by maximizing the mutual aid reimbursement that we get, and buying new... and buying new equipment with that. So it's money that we're getting back for work we've done, and being able to not have to come back to the city and go, "We need this gadget and this gadget this fiscal year." We're able to take care of those things with some of that reimbursement, really trying to maximize, you know, planning ahead. What are the tools we're going to need in the next couple of years? And really trying to be strategic about where we're spending our dollars, streamlining our budget, so that we can, you know, look at how we can make, make those things opportunities to happen in the future. Again, there are, you know, tax dollars, sales tax revenue, transient occupancy taxes, all those things factor into the city budget, and we're very cognizant of that, and there's a lot of competing needs. So we're trying to do our part to ease that burden, but still looking at growth. It's essential for the Fire Department to grow and evolve as our demands change. When I first started in this industry, running medical aids was a very new thing. We, we did it, but it was still kind of new, and a lot of equipment changed. Now we run, we're an all hazards department. We have hazards materials, technical rescues, medical aids, we're all paramedics. So the, the industry changes, our demands change, and we're trying to keep up with those demands.
Great, thank you. Well, I, I appreciate this, this incremental approach. I see very low risk for the city, and, and thank you, congratulations, as a matter of fact, for, for an excellent strategy and presentation on this. And share with my fellow council members, with everything that I've heard tonight, I'm certainly leaning toward the recommended option, option B, and then moving forward and seeing where it goes from there.
Mayor Protim.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate all of the questions that we heard from the audience here tonight, as well as my fellow colleagues. One, one thing that I did want to reference that is concerning for me is that this was, it was, unfortunately, I looked back in our, in our, our initial list for our capital projects. I, I could not find the Bonita Street station in that list. I couldn't find it in our budget under the Fire Department area, I couldn't, section, excuse me. I also couldn't find it under the general governmental CIP area. And I, I just really, you know, I'm leery because we didn't have this discussed at CFAC either. It wasn't something that came before us. And we just recently added the radio communications, of which we all talked about at our special budget meeting. And I'm just wondering why this one wasn't in there, if you could help me, Chief.
Yeah, unfortunately, with the timing of this, to coincide right as budget development's happening, that was not intended. This was not included in the budget, because it wasn't a project that I have had the discussion with Council, so I didn't have direction to put a lot more work and get it into the budget. This has been a topic that the Fire Department has been exploring since the early 2000s. So it's something every fire chief before me has worked on to some degree. And we finally got to a point where we had enough info and felt like the time was right to bring it to Council with everything going on, with the information we received from the standards of cover, the, the fire hazards, severity zone maps, all of that just kind of played into this as the appropriate time to bring this. And it was just coincidental that it coincides as with budget development. I would have preferred to have this discussion before we started into budget development for this fiscal year, but that just wasn't able to happen.
Thank you for that response, I really greatly appreciate it, because what you're asking us to do tonight is to yet add this to our capital projects. I believe on the second to the last slide. And, you know, obviously, I, I'm just looking at our list, our growing list of cap projects, and in the prioritizing, I think, is the area that I'm looking at. And I appreciate that you're looking at this as an incremental project, especially when it comes to the staffing. And I also appreciate the fact that I think North Morro Bay needs to have adequate continuous service at a service level that the south end of town has. So I see the, you know, value, obviously, in that, and the safety of our citizens. We saw during the emergency in 2023, our city get cut in half. So I completely, seeing those visuals, really brought back those memories, and that wasn't a good time. The fact that we already own the property is also, I, I believe, a plus here. And, and this is preparation for our future, regardless of we have, you know, a large population growth, like, you know, another 2,000 people, because we do have our cap. But also increase in tourism, visitors, let us not forget our visitors, too, that we serve with your, with these services. Our, our costs are always going to escalate. I think we bring that up almost every time a, a project comes before us. But I'm also thinking about our revenue stream conversation, and, and, you know, what, what kind of, you know, bigger industry, or, you know, what, what else could we have happening here, where we can not only move forward a project of this value to all of us in our community, but other ones as well? So I'm just throwing out some of that in this conversation, and I really appreciate you giving us all of that. I am personally leaning more toward option C right now, and I, and I think, and I'm, I'm still open to discussion on this. I just want to see where everybody else is at right now, because there've been some really, really great points brought up tonight, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Yeah, I, I'm leaning towards option C. I could see the other choice if, if we knew that it was going to be a public safety building, but I don't, you know, I, I, there's no guarantees of any of those things. The, to your comment, Councilmember Edwards is, we actually funded this study a year ago, so we've all known it was in the works coming. Maybe not on the capital projects list, but certainly we did that with the intent of the chief coming back with some recommendations for that station when we funded that study. There's no guarantee, well, you talked about revenue and things, you know, and there's no guarantee on the reimbursements when we do, you know, out-of-county assignments, when there's lots of fires, we get lots of work. But when there's not, then there's just not that extra revenue. My concern really, I, I support the station. I live in the north end of town, three of us live in the north end of town. Someone said, you know, "Why are there more calls? We have more visitors." And our population is, is elderly, and, and, you know, 50, 60 over. And the difference, as, as Mr. Grove's alluded to, is minutes save lives. And we have a constituent in here who's talked about fires in the neighbors' backyards that are weekend visitors and things like that, and we've seen the devastation from those. So certainly having a response quicker. We do have an ambulance on Bonita Street. That provides a lot of coverage, but there's no guarantee that they're not in Los Osos or up the coast in Cayucas or somewhere. They cover a lot of space, so there, there's just not a guarantee that's always there. The same with Cayucas. I, I'm really, really, really concerned about the staffing. I don't want to build a station that we can't staff. And knowing that the seasonals are there seven or eight months out of the year, you know, maybe it's seasonal state. I just don't want to go down this path, build a station and not be able to fund it. When I served before, 2008 to 2012, I sat in this room, and I had to lay people off that I know. And I am concerned for the financial challenges that our state has in all of our municipalities. And so I'm struggling to see how we can afford to, at $154,000, hire potentially two more firefighters that would be needed to house it. And, and I know it's a staggered approach. I know we have the seasonals, that makes me feel better about it. I, I did ask earlier a question that I said I was going to ask you, but I got an answer from one of the others about the MOU and what it allows as far as splitting staffing. I did get a response to it, that you can do two and two. Just worried about those things with the unions and what all that looks like for staffing. So I don't know if you have any response to any of that, it was a lot to unload, sorry.
Okay, in regards to the staffing, the recommendation for the staffing that came from the standards of cover is irrelevant, whether it's a one-station or two-station model. That recommendation stands as of today, is the recommendation of where we should be. This proposal is, we already split our staffing to cover two engines, and, you know, there's times they both have to respond because of the number of hands needed. That's just a fact of a small department. But moving one of those crews to North Morro Bay does provide that increased level of service. So if we didn't add any additional staffing, we're still in the same boat we have today. We're just improving the level of service to North Morro Bay. That's the approach I'm taking, and still looking forward and looking for ways to increase that staffing, because there is an identified need right now to have that improved staffing level. So ultimately, that, that need is there regardless. I'm just trying to find a way to solve one of the other facets of the issue.
Thank you, I, I appreciate that. Yeah, and the standards of cover, I think, whether we have 10,000 people or, or a community of 100,000 people, everybody's faced with the same time challenge.
Absolutely.
And, and their square footage they're covering. And, and like I said, I, I wholeheartedly support the, the renovation or rebuilding of that station and, and the staffing. I just want to be very cognitive of what, what that, that means as far as personnel costs to do that.
Absolutely, and just to tie into your comment about, you know, having it available to PD, that is something absolutely, with the two-story option, is absolutely available with the office space that's available downstairs, allocating one of those offices, you know, for an officer that can write reports and, and all that stuff. That, you know, that's kind of an easy facet of that. The one-story option, it, they would have to just come in and, and share space with us. It would be more difficult, but we're all one family.
Thank you. Any, any other comments or questions before we go to a motion?
Um, I, oh, I do.
Question?
Go ahead.
But my comment was going to be, just as a follow-up to your comments, Madam Mayor. You know, the, the staffing issue is, is a huge concern of mine as well, but that's what I appreciate about this incremental approach, is that, is that, immediately, it's not going to affect the staffing levels at all. We have that goal of increased staff. We're sufficient with current staffing and have the goal of increased staffing, really regardless of the second station. And so it just comes down to, do we want to build this second station? I heard you mention that we do. And if we are going to do that, then if we're going to put the time and effort, we might as well get the best one, particularly when a lot of it's going to come from grant dollars. So if, if it's coming from grant dollars, a majority of it coming from grant dollars, we'll also have the opportunity down the road to, to see how much we're required to put in. So, I mean, if we're going to do this, I just think that we ought to do it correctly. I've heard Councilmember Landrum very energetically state prior, or in other conversations, that Morro Bay is worth it. And I think this is one of, one of these instances where it is worth it. So I'm making a more, a more impassioned plea here to my fellow council members. And I didn't know where I was going to be coming into this, but given, given the approach that we're taking, I just, I, I feel strongly that option B is, is the best option for us to pursue. The second one down, yeah, it would work, but if we're going to spend all, again, if we're going to spend all this time and energy, why don't we go with the, with the preferred option? Thank you.
I, I guess my comment, Councilmember Eccles, would be, the goal is to reach out and, and the chief's offered to, obviously, try and fund this through grants. So I guess my question would be, what if those aren't available? What's, where, then you're going to look to major Q and E for a funding source to fund that?
There's a multitude of options. There's grants, there's, you know, FEMA fire station construction grants. There's hazard mitigation grants that can be used, because this does provide resiliency. There are USDA fire construction loans that are low-cost, low-interest options. There's donations, there's a multitude of ways. Station, the main station was a combination of a multitude of different types of grants to make that happen, and some loan funding as well. And ultimately, I think that's where we'll land, is a combination of multiple funding sources. Might get lucky and get one grant that funds it all. That's, you know, kind of like winning the lottery, I'm not banking on that. You know, I'm looking at, you know, kicking over every rock and seeing how we can piece this together with the least amount of financial impact to the city. That being said, at the end of the day, we could have a design that the city's never able to fully fund, and it, it doesn't go anywhere, or we have to look at a variation of that. Or we are able to piece together the, the funding needed. I feel pretty confident with the given climate of fire safety and the funding that's out there for different opportunities, that this is a good time to pursue it. You know, at the end of the day, it may not be successful, but that's on me to try to find that funding.
Thank you, and you're continuing, I, I believe, I asked before, to look into the SAFER grants for staffing?
I am, the SAFER grant just released this year, and there were some drastic changes to it. And it's no longer fully funded. The, the, there's some caps on the amount they'll fund per year, and also the cost share is significant.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
So tonight, though, you are asking us to put this in our capital project budget. Do you have a dollar amount that you want us to put in? Or is, I mean, I would be really comfortable doing the B and doing the incremental approach, just like Jeff said. And, and if you can't, if you aren't successful, and this doesn't go forward, we as a city really don't have any capital outlay right now. So that, that's one of my questions, because that's what you asked us to do.
Yeah, so my understanding is because this is a capital project, all projects like that go through the Public Works Department. I would still be the lead on this, working in conjunction with Public Works. But it would have to be outlined in the capital budget. It could be an outlined project that's unfunded. And then I come back with funding sources, you know, this is a multi-year process. This isn't approve it tonight, we start construction next week. There's many steps down the road, but at least getting it listed. And the Public Works Director, if he has any feedback on maybe the process that, in case I'm not stating it correctly. But having it listed as a city project, and then as funding becomes available, we start allocating that.
Any other comments before we go to a motion, or emotion?
I, I was just going to ask, because there's, you know, there's a million dollars difference between B and C, there's no way to, like, find out if you can get funding? Like, I mean, if the funding's not quite adequate for, or comfortable for B, is there, I mean, if it's $100,000 to draw up new plans, is that, is that an option to then go with option C?
Absolutely, we can always come back and reevaluate. My goal is to do one design and work down that road and exhaust every option. And if for some reason we're unsuccessful, we can always reevaluate. That's happened multiple times in the past.
And then with, with the two, the two stations, I just want to be clear that, like, if one truck's in South, both trucks are in South Morro Bay, it really wouldn't help the time for the people in North Morro Bay.
So ultimately, the goal is to still, and we're, we're doing this model today, for a majority of our calls, only one engine responds. The other engine stays back, because we have a significant number of simultaneous incidents, where one call happens, then another call happens. And so, but there are instances, such as a CPR call, you need four people to adequately do CPR. So there's going to be instances where both crews are committed, regardless of where they're located. But ultimately, having engines in both locations of town, one in north and one in south, increases the likelihood that that engine's available and closer to the calls in North Morro Bay.
And since the majority of the calls are in South Morro Bay, what if there are two calls simultaneously, and they're both in South Morro Bay? Is that detrimental?
That happens, and unfortunately, that's just the way emergencies work. You can't predict where they're going to be. You plan for having resources in multiple areas, and you have to shift around as the calls come in. But at the end of the day, you've planned to have a resource that's closer, you've increased the odds that they're going to be closer to that call. That being said, we could have a major traffic accident on the south end of town, and it takes both engines there. That's just the nature of emergency response. We can't predict where they're going to be, or how many hands are needed. Just like we saw the fires in LA, they pulled from out-of-state to bring resources, and you're, you're moving people around. It's, it's a constant movement to try to best meet the needs of the community. So you do your best to plan, you adjust, you change your plans, and you move resources. We bring in, if both, if both units are on a call, we move in a cover engine from Cayucas or from Los Osos to help fill that gap. So we already have systems in place to help, you know, if both units are on a call.
Okay, and then I thought you said something about that you needed three people, three personnel for one of the trucks. So will that be compromised with two? So will that be compromised with two at one station and two at another?
So for a ladder truck, to safely operate it, it does require three, and that is for in the event of a fire where you're doing truck operations. We would have to respond. In the event of a fire, both engines would need to be there for adequate number of personnel. Ultimately, the ideal situation would be to have three people at the headquarters station to operate the ladder truck. We can accomplish that in the summertime when we have the seasonals, in the wintertime. You know, it's one of those things, a small department, we're going to have to adjust, and we have to do that now.
Thank you.
Well, if you had a, you had a structure fire that you're using the ladder truck, they would take the ladder truck and the other engine would respond, so you would still have four people there.
Yes.
It would just be... I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion to approve items one through four on the recommended action to affirm the intent of the City Council to redevelop and staff when possible the Benita Street Fire Station. As city funding and departmental staffing becomes available and consider the options to direct the chief to complete the architectural drawings sufficient to create a shovel-ready project with the funding as discussed this evening, and thank you to the friends of Morro Bay Fire, and authorize the chief to seek funding sources for construction of a new fire station, option B, if possible, and include the project in the city's capital improvement project list. And I'll ask for a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief, for the very detailed and for all our grueling questions. Public Works, last item. Thank you, Mr. Qualick, for being so patient. Eve, thanks for getting double-dipped tonight.
Thank you.
That was a lot. Appreciate it. All you guys, thank you for staying from the department tonight. Appreciate it.
One, this is... Drag it on to...
Mayor, may I start? Okay, thank you. We're moving on to the last item of the meeting, and this is, this is one with regional impact. This is state water policy review, and hopefully, City Council can give some direction. This policy has been presented and discussed at the County State Water Subcontractor Advisory Committee, which Mr. Qualick is one of the members. Mr. Qualick chose not to join the committee to approve the policy. Instead, he wanted, he recommended this policy be brought before PWEB and City Council, which is tonight, so that, to create additional cooperation, transparency. And essentially, after you hear, hearing about the policy, you may have some questions. And essentially, after all that, we, staff hope this council gives some, would agree with the policy, with, recommend, with the modification if necessary, and so that staff can forward that on to the Board of Supervisor. I understand that when I was listening to this item at a PWEB meeting, there's some questions about Los Osos and things like that. I think Mr. Qualick is going to address that. I just want to clarify that it's my understanding, this policy alone is really not going to, it's just a starting point. It's actually going to help further discussion regarding, regarding water situation at Los Osos Community District. So with that, Mr. Qualick, please.
Thank you, City Manager Kimball. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council and members of the public. My name's Greg Qualick, Public Works Director for the city of Morro Bay. I'm planning cleanup tonight, and it's late, so I'm going to go through this relatively quickly, but please stop if you have any questions. As City Manager Kimball said, I do serve on the advisory board to, what is essentially the Board of Supervisors, on the state water subcontractors advisory committee. And we were asked to vote on this policy update, whether to recommend it to the Board of Supervisors. And I was the lone abstention because I wanted to make sure that our city had an opportunity to see this out in the open and also to provide input. So the decision for the City Council tonight is whether to direct me to write a letter to the Board of Supervisors, offering Morro Bay support for this policy and/or any feedback regarding the policy. They were set to see this item next week. It has now moved to July, July 15th. And so that, yeah, that is when they would review it. Finally, before I begin, we do have Wes Thompson, Supervising Engineer, who works for County of Slow here in the audience, and he'd be available for any county-specific questions. So a quick state water background for Morro Bay. Wait, let me just look at something here. Okay. So in 1963, the district executed contracts with Department of Water Resources for 25,000 acre-feet per year of state water. I want to clarify something. I've been talking about the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors also acts as the district board for the San Luis Obispo Flood Control and Water Conservation District, which is a separate district, but it's staffed by county staff. So in the 1990s, Morro Bay and 10 subcontractors executed a contract with the district for 4,830 acre-feet per year of state water. So just want to be clear, the county, as the Flood Control and Water Conservation District, has a contract with the state, we have a subcontract with the county. And so we have a lot of limitations in how we can use the water because of that, based on that subcontract, which we'll talk about later. Beyond the 4,830 acre-feet per year of water that's allocated to the subcontractors, there's also over 5,000 acre-feet per year that are, that we have as drought buffer. We're not really going to go into the definition of that because it's complicated, but we'll certainly take questions about it. Further, the district contracts with the Central Coast Water Authority for treatment and delivery of 4,830 acre-feet of water per year. CCWA, Central Coast Water Authority, there's all sorts of agencies involved in Morro Bay's reception of 1,100 acre-feet or so per year of state water. And again, my intention is not to go into that detail tonight, but we're certainly, we can certainly ask, answer questions about that. When the city took on state water, we were supposed to use it as a supplemental supply, and that's because of delivery interruptions in state water. That said, our demand in Morro Bay for water is around 1,100 acre-feet per year, and we use 1,000 acre-feet per year approximately of state water to meet that demand. State water is clearly Morro Bay's primary source of water, and that is an issue. And so how much water do we get compared to the other subcontractors in our district? You can see there, we're highlighted in green. We are the big dog when it comes to state water allocation in the county. We have the highest allocation amount at 13, 13 acre-feet per year. We don't use all that every year. We have that excess of about 300 acre-feet per year that goes unused. Just a quick map so everyone can see kind of what we're talking about here. Just to clarify, a comment I saw in the public comments, you can see along the right side there, there's a light blue line. That's the California aqueduct that sort of parallels the five. And then you have the coastal branch, which branches off of that aqueduct. And state water comes down that coastal branch pipeline, and it goes through treatment processes and pumps and goes up to Polonio Pass where it's treated, and then it comes down gravity. And if you kind of follow your eyes down the blue line that's going towards San Luis Obispo, it branches off and it goes towards Morro Bay. That is called the Choro Valley Pipeline. So sometimes those two things get mixed up, Choro Valley Pipeline and Coastal Branch. So we are technically on both of, on both of those. And so that's state water. And for our groundwater basin, we have six wells near Lila Kaiser Park. Our max permitted use is 581 acre-feet per year. It is not a drought-proof supply of water. The reliability varies. We had some scary situations in 2020 after an extended drought and some dewatering activities related to the wharf where there really wasn't much water down there at all. We have nitrate levels in the groundwater here, and that does require reverse osmosis treatment. And through that reverse osmosis process, we lose about 25% of the water. If you do the math, it's around 435 acre-feet that we could actually pull out of the basin by permit. And so, again, we have around 1,100 acre-feet that we need to meet. Our only other source of water besides state water, we've got less than half of that in the groundwater basin. And that said, during extended droughts, that water may not even be in there. So it's a pretty serious situation we're in. We actually use 100 to 200 acre-feet per year because, again, we rely on state water. State water, as said earlier, is not always reliable. There's low allocation years, 5% years and that kind of thing. So it is something that the city team monitors closely. In the future, we're working on a recycled water project. IPR stands for Indirect Potable Reuse. We'll be injecting advanced purified water into the Morro Basin to supplement Morro Basin groundwater. The goal is to add 412 and a half acre-feet during drought years when we need it. And so that could bring us, I'm going to, the math is something like 325 acre-feet per year after, after treatment. And that will help us build resilience during low state water allocation years. So that's kind of a snapshot of our water supply portfolio, and that plays into the state water policy. So the district, again, this is the San Luis Obispo Flood Control and Water Conservation District, currently holds over 14,000 acre-feet in unsubscribed water every year that we have 100% allocation from Department of Water Resources. So just to go back up here quickly, you see all the subcontractors. When you add them up, it comes to just over 10,000 acre-feet per year. And at the bottom, the second row to the bottom, the district has an unsubscribed allocation of 14,463 acre-feet. So, big question, what happens to that water? Before we go there, the district has authority over this water because no subcontractor has a contract to take it. So the district holds it in a reserve in San Luis Preservoir, which is not in San Luis Obispo County. And then the county taxpayer pays for the district to do this with no benefit to the county taxpayer. So for example, if you live in Templeton or Los Osos or Cayucos or the city of San Luis Obispo, you are not a recipient of state water, but as a county taxpayer, you pay for the county to hold state water for state water subcontractors, of which you are not a member. And so that, there is sort of an inherent taxation issue there that the county is interested in resolving. And that plays into one of the, one of the reasons for these policies. And then historically, the district backstops water for subcontractor shortages. This happened in 2022 in Morro Bay. We ran out of our water. We had very low supply in the groundwater basin, and the district essentially came in and continued providing us with state water because they had this stored supply for us. So that was really nice for us. We didn't have to worry too much about our water supply that year. And I think at that time, the district said maybe they could do that for a couple more years and then they would run out. So there is some history of the county doing that for the subcontractors, which is important. We'll talk a bit more about that later. The district can also sell that stored water, but a few guidelines exist. We, district sold some of it in 2024. We got about $160,000 because of that sale, because we sold off some of our excess water. The district can do that right now. And I believe there may be a misconception that these policies will allow for it. I mean, they've already done it. So there's questions about Los Osos. Everybody's interested in what's going on with Los Osos. My understanding, and the gentleman from the county can clarify, but the way I understand it is the district can sell to Los Osos now. There is nothing preventing them from doing that, other than there's no pipe connection. If Los Osos were to successfully build a pipe to the Choro Valley Pipeline, the county can sell to them right now. I say that because these water policies that we're going to be talking about, they are not about the Los Osos water supply. Again, they can sell that to Los Osos now. So what do these district guidelines do? And why is the district seeking them? Well, they desire these guidelines on sales and transfers of that 14,000 acre-feet per year that we discussed earlier. One, for cost recovery for the county taxpayer. Two, to be more strategic about their future water transfers. And then the other piece of it, and this is mentioned in the guidelines, in the future, the district would like to renegotiate the subcontracts, including ours, which would be good for us because we would then have more flexibility with how we use our water. Right now, we can either choose to have it delivered to us or not, and that's it. And then finally, the reason for the guidelines is to clarify the district's priorities and criteria of use to maximize contracting conditions. So what are the priorities? I'll read through these. The next slide, I won't read through everything that's in there, but it's important to note that in the priorities, in the draft policy, it clearly states the number one priority for excess water is the needs of the subcontractors, such as the city of Morro Bay. So annually, the district will reach out to the subcontractors and say, does anyone need additional water? And so we will have an opportunity and we'll get that first right of refusal. After that, it's local public water agencies, and then place of use, internal temporary transfers and exchanges. They'd consider external temporary transfers and exchanges, and then additional considerations. So this is detailed a bit more in the policies, but the key point for the city, in my view, is that we do have that first right of refusal. And then if we don't take it, the county, for the reasons mentioned on a previous slide, would then have an opportunity to sell off some of that water or transfer it out. There's also criteria for use. We don't have to go through this list. If any members of the council are interested in it, we can. And so our analysis on the city side is that, you know, we, the city would remain a top priority under the policy. We would have the first right of refusal, as mentioned. We can participate in investment recovery from the state water system. There's flexibility for cost recovery via surplus sales. And what we're really excited about, maybe this is just me personally currently, but there is, there will be, as the contracts are renegotiated, greater clarity in future transfer and storage programs. We have no storage in the city of Morro Bay, except for our Morro groundwater basin, and it is not a big basin, right? It doesn't, we don't have a lot of capacity there. If there were an earthquake in the central valley and our state water pipeline was shut down for nine months, we would be in a serious situation. We would be able to survive in the short term, and that we'd probably have to put some water restrictions out for the public, and it would be very uncomfortable. But we could work out scenarios where we are water banking with water banking agencies, and we can, we can store water in other places at a cost and then use that water when we don't have other options. So that's something we're excited about. We don't have that option currently under our subcontract. Cost recovery, so big picture, the district sold off 13,500 acre-feet and made $5.6 million. Our share of that was $160,000. The city has had losses. The city has had losses since 1996, around 8,000 lost to spills or unused allocations. So a spill means when the city has stored water in San Luis Reservoir and it's not used, the state water program every few years just zeroes out our stored water. So we lose that and it's just gone. And then we've also had around 1,500 acre feet of unused pipeline capacity. So, you know, this policy down the road will enable the city to be more strategic in how we use that surplus water, either through cost recovery or water banking. And with all that, and I'll toot my own horn here, through some of my intervention and requests, the district has agreed to include a 5,000 acre foot reserve so that the district can still serve as that backstop in cases where the city and other subcontractors are running out of water during extended droughts. And for short-term use, it would meet subcontractor needs and also basically the same thing, countywide resiliency during drought. Our key takeaways, and we're getting to the end here, the draft policy that the city council's been presented with tonight is a framework only. Final transfers and sales still will require district board approval and public input. Now we're talking about the district sales. There won't be any long contracts made by the district until the subcontractors in the district have renegotiated our subcontracts. And the policy supports subcontractor protections, drought preparedness, and strategic water management. So the staff recommendation was to review this draft proposed state water transfer policy and then direct the Public Works Director to send a letter of support to the district board as agenda correspondence and also provide any feedback that the council may have on this draft policy. We also did take this to the Public Works Advisory Board and they were very interested in this policy. We didn't necessarily receive input to bring back to the council on that from the PWA, but they did have a look at it. And so with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Director Qualick. Questions to my right?
So if this policy passes, currently, the district basically sells the surplus water. If this policy passes, then our extra 300 acre foot of water, can we sell it ourselves? Is that what's going to happen? Or is the district the only one that can sell it and we just get a percentage?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember LaFaye. Currently, it would only be the district who can sell it. Down the road, as we renegotiate our contract with the district, the vision is that the subcontractors, such as City Morro Bay, would have our own flexibility on whether we wanted
Okay, the 300 acre feet a year is in best case scenarios, right? The extra 300 acre feet?
That's correct.
Right. And then, so this has to do with the pipeline that they want to put into Los Osos, all of this? No, none of it has anything to do. And the water loss to unused allocation, where does that go?
So any, thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. Any unused allocation goes, it doesn't go anywhere. It just stays in San Luis Reservoir until it's then zeroed out by the state and then it's lost.
When it's lost, like it goes somewhere?
It goes, it gets lost as a paper spill, perhaps Mr.?
Back into the system.
It goes back into the state system, but it's no longer ours.
But it's there, okay. And when you were talking about our water options, you didn't mention anything about the option of the IPR water that we're doing a lot to try to get work. And so I'm just wondering.
Thank you for the question. I did have a slide on it.
Oh, you didn't include that, I didn't think, as an option for us to have water? Towards the end, like the middle end, middle of your presentation, you said something about how we don't have water. We won't have any water. We're like in, we're going to be in this dire situation. And you didn't, I didn't hear anything about the IPR. Maybe I misunderstood you.
I'd be happy to go over the slide again.
No, that's okay.
Questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Qualick. I'm going to throw you a little bit of a curve ball here, but when you went through the history of our water supply back in, and I actually served on a water district way back when in the 90s, Soquel Creek Water District up in Santa Cruz County. So this is bringing back mostly pleasant memories. But in the 90s, early 90s, Morro Bay made some renown in that because of an emergency drought situation, we installed a desalination plant. And then subsequently, at some point, and this is where I get cloudy, we still have the RO process in the same place, but I guess at some point, we gave up a permit to draw. I don't know where we were drawing, if it was Brackish Wells 100% of the time, but that's my first question for you is what happened to our D-SAL permit? And is there any chance in the future of us exploring that? And then second question, when you did mention our wells and the 581 acre feet per year maximum, is that per our permit through the state? Yeah?
Yep, thank you for the questions. I'll answer that one first. Yes, that is by permit. It doesn't necessarily mean the water's there. It usually is, but.
Yep, okay.
As to the other question about desalination, it's a good one. In the tomes that I've read about the history of Morro Bay water supply, yes, there was some extreme droughts and the city was looking at two options to resolve those long-term. One was desalination and one was state water. And the desalination plant was put in and then shortly thereafter, state water came. The desalination plant never really produced quality water from everything I've heard and seen. In fact, a coworker used to have an old bottle of water that was produced from that facility and it was like rust orange. And so when state water came, it was much cheaper than running that plant. State water is relatively inexpensive as a water source. And so the city simply didn't need to use the desalination plant any further. And a couple decades went by, as I understand it, components fell into disrepair. And if the city had wanted to restart that desalination plant, it would have cost more to rehab it than to just build a new one. And so the components that comprised the desalination piece of that plant were removed and what was salvaged was that reverse osmosis system, which currently treats our groundwater. And those intakes actually, interestingly enough, for D-SAL are around Coleman Park. If you actually walk in the little dunes there between Embarcadero and water, you'll see somewhat large utility vaults and those vaults are the D-SAL intakes.
And were those wells, do you know, or were they direct?
That was, my understanding was that they were doing the intake. I don't believe they were wells. They were just taking in the harbor water. I could be wrong about that.
Well, I think that's maybe the permit that was given up was that intake. All right, well, it's just, I want to bring it up because it's old history. One of the things that I learned way back when I served on a water board, it was sort of a mantra, maybe our county person can speak to it, was you never, ever, ever give up a piece of your water portfolio, you know? And I was, when Morro Bay did that, it just bewildered me.
And may I just make a comment there? And I wholeheartedly agree with you. This is one of the reasons that utilities and public works have been very hesitant to sell off properties and wells in Chora Valley, because we still have a water permit there. It's not a great permit, but it's something, should the city ever need additional water, we could explore utilizing that water there through that permit.
Good, thank you. My last question for you, you outlined the parameters of the draft policy. What do you perceive as the potential risks to the city of Morro Bay, if any, with the draft policy?
Thank you for that question. To me, the only risk would be that that historical backstop role that the district has played wouldn't be there. I'm satisfied with the 5,000 acre foot reserve, given that we typically use around 1,000 acre feet per year. We could probably, in drought conditions, up the city's basin draw and also, once IPR is in, you know, supplement that so that we can maybe have half of our water supply or possibly even a little bit more come from the Morro Basin and live off of 500 or 600 acre feet of state water. Again, with a 5,000 acre foot allocation, or I'm sorry, reserve, I'm confident that that would be sufficient to last the city through extended droughts. But if there were a risk, it would be that, you know, what if that 5,000 acre foot reserve's not enough? Then what? You know, if we don't have water in the ground and we don't have water come through the pipe, we've got a pretty big problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Qualick. I actually really appreciate you bringing this before us and having us take a look at this before, I think you said July 15th, when the soups take a look at it. I had a question with regard to future renegotiations. You mentioned the idea of water banking and I just was kind of wondering, is that something that you really see happening in the future, an actual opportunity for us to store water? I'm just, I just want to know a little bit more about it if I could.
Thank you for the question. I do. The state water subcontractors advisory committee has invited water banking agencies to give presentations to us that we've received. I think there's interesting opportunities there. We can't really act on them right now until the renegotiations happen, so. But it's something that, in my view, once we renegotiate the contract, and by the way, that could be two years from now, but we would want to have serious discussions with the Public Works Advisory Board and the city council on how to utilize our portfolio. Because now we'd have around, as Councilmember Landrum said, in the best years, we'd have 300 acre feet excess. What do we do with that? I think those would be interesting things to explore. Right now, we're really limited in how we could, what we can do with that.
Thank you. You answered my second question. Appreciate that.
Thank you. I had, just in disclosure, I had a meeting, hour, hour and a half meeting with the County Public Works Director, John Diodati, and went over all this. So I don't have a lot of questions because most of them have already been answered by him. I would just ask one question. On the 5,000 acre feet reserve, how is that going to play in if there's new water subcontractors that come online and you are going to potentially deplete that then?
Thank you for the question. The idea with that reserve is that it's a reserve from all future contracts or transfers. And I'll also say, the county, the messaging I'm getting from the county is that they do not intend to take on new subcontractors. Rather, there would be sort of a, let's use Los Osos as an example. And again, I believe they can do this now, but the idea is with the 9,000 or so acre feet that are outside of the reserve, there's no need to have a subcontract. They could just sell the water directly to Los Osos or other jurisdictions.
Thank you. Public comment is open on this item.
Betty Winholtz, I hope that you'll send some comments back and not just adopt it as it is. And I've made my points in my email to you. One of those, and I've outlined them seven, eight, nine, and 11 on my email to you, seven had to do with saying that, a statement that state water for us, us being Morro Bay and Pismo, has not been our primary water source, and that is just absolutely not true. Back in the 90s, the choice wasn't between the D-SAL and the state water. It was between building a dam in San Bernardo Creek and creating our own place to store water or accepting state water. And it went to a vote of the people and the people chose the state water. Then came the huge drought and the D-SAL plant was built without a permit, without coastal commission permit. And eventually Coastal Commission came after us and said, either you buy the permit or you get rid of it. And we got rid of it. So that's kind of the stair step of that. So in my mind, state water's always been our primary source and we've always depended on it for that. And that leads me to my point number eight, where it says in a statement, if any subcontractor plans to acquire additional supplies to sell surplus surprise, then the district will attempt to meet those needs. And I am uneasy with that word, attempt. You want them to meet that need. And then in number nine, where it says, after first and second subcontractors, then the next level, it seems to me that ag and domestic use, private use, should never be where we sell our state water. Because remember that ag use isn't just your lettuce and celery, or celery, it's your grapes and those vineyards in North and South County. Do we want our state water growing grapes? I don't, okay? Because that's a profit for somebody else and it doesn't feed anybody. So I have real issue with those two items being on there. And I think my number 11 backs up that, where it says, who actually has ag, except private individuals, private organizations, and institutions. I don't know, unless you're talking Cal Poly, you know, who really is going to be getting that water. It's going to be private individuals. And that's just not okay with me with public state water. And so going back to the idea about, I'm running out of time. So just the concept of water banking then, real quickly, is look at all the trouble Paso's had with trying to water bank up there. And so in North County, so I'm not real big on water banking.
Any other public comment on this item? AGP?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not have any public comment.
Thank you. With that, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council. Yeah, the water banking, so correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding from those I know, like my family up in Paso, who had to water bank, they're paying to store it and then paying to have it delivered for the water you actually paid for already. And then you only get the allocation if it's available on the banking?
Thanks for the question. The models that I've seen are structured a bit differently and yes, I mean, you're certainly paying for it, but you're paying for it through water. So the one that we received a presentation on in short, and I'm oversimplifying, but you send them two acre feet and you get one back when you need it. The upshot is when you need the water, it's there. So the goal in that scenario would be that over time, you bank up water for a year when you really need it. Those are the kinds of things that we looked at.
And you pay for the delivery then on top of that, separate from your regular for the bank, my understanding?
I don't have the details on that here tonight. And again, this is something we'd be looking at two or three years from now.
I just know of horror stories from growers up in Paso on that whole situation. And I, to ask for clarification, based on, you know, Betty's comment, when I had my discussion with Mr. Diodati, he said that the excess water would not go to private developers or private developers separate from private growers? Is that not considered the same category then? I mean, it was, the water would go to other municipalities or water needs and not to, not to, somebody, I guess, you know, he was alluding to building projects or building new houses, but does that mean that it would go to private ag for parts and things?
I'll let Mr. Thompson, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and.
Thank you.
Council. My name is Wes Thompson. I'm an engineer with County Public Works. And yeah, to speak to your question, the district envisions continuing to partner with the public water agencies that it currently partners with. There are also some mutual water companies. There are also some mutual water companies that provide public water. It might be that mutual water companies or an entity, perhaps an entity like Golden State Water, who's an investor-owned utility, or the county's GSA, who maybe is working to bring in water for, to recharge basins that would serve a variety of uses, could be domestic, it could be agricultural. So that's, you know, the policy's still curing before we get it to the board in July. And in fact, the board may have some input. But the draft that you guys have seen, that's in your staff report, is pretty close, I think, to what we hope it'll be. I'll leave it at that, and if there are, I'm happy to take other questions.
Thank you.
I'd add one thing. If it's the council's desire to communicate to the board supervisors that the city of Morro Bay prefers that excess water not go to private parties, that's certainly feedback that we could provide as part of the letter.
Well, yeah, I guess, you know, you're talking about state water, so the argument could be made, then would we be sending it to our own golf course here that's always needing water? I think, as was said before, the most valuable thing that this community has is our water portfolio, period. And the IPR, we don't even know what or if it will produce, if it does or what it will, so I'm concerned. I appreciate the historic data that shows the extra state water we've had, but I also know, from living here 46 years, all the times of the droughts too, so I'm just concerned. That's all. I'll pass it down to my colleagues.
I don't have any questions.
Comments? Any comments?
I think that it's important for the county to know that state water is our primary water source, Morro Bay. I think that's important. I think that state water should be used for drinking and not for domestic, not for, what were the other uses? Ag or other uses. And also, if we do get IPR water, that's kind of competing against ourself to say anything else, you know, to say that it, state wa, I mean, right? It's kind of competing against ourselves. If we wanted to sell our own IPR water for those uses, we would be competing against ourself in allowing or agreeing that state water should be used for those things as well.
Got a question for me?
Kind of, yeah. What do you think about that?
I'm not sure I understand that line of reasoning. The way I would see it is, assuming that we have IPR water and assuming that we have a renegotiated contract with the district, the more water we have in our portfolio, the more flexibility we have in what we do with it. We could sell it or we could bank it. And so, if, for example, we have 13, again, this is in an ideal year, we have 1313 acre feet coming out of state water, we only need 1,000 from state water, and then we have somewhere around 700 acre feet out of the basin, and again, this is ideal conditions, I'm not suggesting that this is really how it would look in a given year. That's around 2,000 acre feet of water, and our total demand's 1,100. Now we have 900 acre feet to sell. Maybe it sells at $400 an acre foot, and so I'm not going to venture to do that math in my head, but the more water we have, the more, it becomes a commodity that then we can sell.
Right, but one, one way of getting the water is a lot cheaper than the other. The state water is a lot cheaper than the IPR water.
It is, and we're looking at ways, this is kind of a separate conversation, but we're looking at ways to make the IPR less expensive through less treatments. So we've talked about that, I believe with the P-WAB already, but there may be some ways to blend IPR water into the groundwater to reduce the need for reverse osmosis, which would then make that less expensive. So that's correct, based on what we know now, but may change.
Okay. I also think that we shouldn't sell it to private individuals. And then I would like to know, why do we need to renegotiate our contract?
It's a good question. So right now, we essentially have one option, is take delivery or not take delivery, or one decision. If we wanted to sell our, part of our allocation to, I don't know, Pismo or something, we don't have a way of doing that. Our contract doesn't allow it. So if we renegotiate the contract, the goal would be, and it's not just City of Morro Bay, it's all the subcontractors, is that we'd have more flexibility with what we can do with that water.
Other than drinking it?
Yes, yes. And that's because we lose a lot of the water, so it just, it goes into a reservoir and sits for a few years and gets zeroed out. So we would have flexibility over that water. Obviously, drinking water, potable water, would be the priority use for the city, but right now, we don't have a great situation with our, how the contract's set up and how DWR does what they do. We've lost a lot of water.
Okay, yeah, those are my recommendations. I agree with, you know, a lot of the comments from Betty. And I think it's unusual that we're renegotiating our contract.
I just want to be mindful, we're past 9:30. Councilmember Eccles comments.
Director Qualick, can you comment a little bit more on the first right of refusal, or perhaps the county, Mr. Thompson? And just sort of a general comment, you know, there's concern, I just, I'm concerned about this as well. You mentioned at the very beginning of your presentation, we're sort of the big dog when it comes to the allocation. So that just gives me pause that, well, we have the most to lose in this situation, and I want to just ensure that we don't place ourselves in a position of losing some of our water assets. So if you could comment to the first right of refusal, and then just in general, our position within the county and how, frankly, how we protect that position.
Thank you for that question. I'd like to start off and kick it to Wes for a follow-up response. But I want to be clear about one thing. I didn't address it in the presentation, but the district has a contractual obligation to provide the city with 1,300 and 13 acre feet per year during 100% allocation years, regardless of what happens with these policies, or what happens with any renegotiated contract. We are not gambling our drinking water. That is not part of this discussion. And regardless of someone else taps into our pipe, or the county were to take on another subcontractor, which they say they don't want to do, or we're selling water to wine grape field or farm, the county has a contractual obligation to give the city the water that it's due. If they don't do that, we would sue them. I mean, it's just that simple. So when we talk about priority of use, it's of excess water beyond, now, from the county's perspective, from the district's perspective, excess water from Morro Bay would be anything above 1313. We don't even use the 1313. But let's say, in a given year, there's only a 20% allocation, and with our drought buffer, and I'm not going to do the math in my head, but I'm just going to use it as an example, at a 20% year, maybe we have 750 acre feet coming from state water. Well, the county that year, in theory, would have excess water, and they'd come to us and say, "Greg, representative of Morro Bay subcontractor, you are our priority. Do you need any additional water this year?" And we would say, "Yeah, we're only getting 750. We'd like 1,000." Then we get that extra 250. And then they go to the other subcontractors, they would ask those same questions, only after they've exhausted that priority one, that's that first right of refusal, then they would go to the next one, which I believe is other agencies that don't currently have subcontracts. For example, I'm just going to throw one out there, Templeton or something. Hey, Templeton now wants 200 acre feet per year. And if there was a transfer, and I'm looking for a head nod, even then, that would have to go to the board of supervisors. And if for some reason, the city of Morro Bay felt wrong or aggrieved because we had the chance of first right of refusal and whatever reason it didn't happen, then, you know, we would go to the county board of supervisors and say, "You can't approve this because you skipped us." I don't think that they're going to do that. And again, even in that scenario, we have not given up our drinking water at all. This isn't about that. So maybe you could address any other questions that came up there, Wes?
I think you, I think you covered it. I'm happy to clarify if that's helpful, but under the right of first refusal, as Director Qualick said, the district would approach the subcontractors. They would each have the opportunity to take any of the surplus water, based on their proportional share relative to their contracts. And then the district would go down the line. And so these policies are an attempt to establish informally what those priorities are, actually to take what's already established by the district in 2003, and just update those and clarify where needed. So these policies are actually pretty consistent, I'd say, with what was in 2003, from that standpoint, so.
One difference from the 2003 policy, if I may just interject here, correct me if I'm wrong, Wes, but 2003 policies don't allow the district to sell outside of the county, but, or is it outside of the coastal branch?
On a permanent basis, outside the county.
Right, and permanent doesn't mean permanent, it means up to 25 years?
It would mean permanently giving up, you know, as we talked about earlier, you never want to give up your water rights, right? So the district has this long-term contract with the state out to 2085, so permanently transferring, permanently giving up a port, some of our, the district's 25,000 acre foot contract would be, let's say, permanently reducing it to 20,000 acre feet. So 5,000 would be permanently sold to another entity. So the district would no longer have the financial obligation or the opportunity to receive benefit from that contract share. That's what, that's what, that's what a permanent transfer would amount to.
And one other clarification, just for the council's awareness, as part of that first right of refusal, could the city buy additional Table A allocation? In other words, right now, we get 1,300 13 acre feet per year. Could we say, "We actually want 1,600 a year," and we would have priority over Santa Barbara?
Getting into complicated territory here, contractually. If the district had, let's say there was another subcontractor, let's say Pismo Beach had 300 acre feet they wanted to give up from their 1240 contract, then Morro Bay or others would potentially have access, first right of refusal to that permanent allocation that is contracted to our local agencies. We have 10 plus Morro Bay.
One last question. Are we going to be signing some type of contract in two years? Has this been looked at by our legal counsel?
I'm going to answer that as best I can. The goal would be to look at a contract in two years. That contract has not been even drafted. This is just a, the policy is the first step. Once the policy gets passed by the board of supervisors, then the county starts, oh, excuse me, the district starts opening up all the subcontractor contracts and saying, you know, "How do we give more flexibility to the subcontractors on how they use their excess water?" That's going to take some time to develop. So there's nothing for our attorney to look at at this time.
Can I just, like, can we imagine a scenario, because we've heard so much about Los Osos and the county supporting Los Osos and building that pipeline from, to get state water to Los Osos? And if they did that, and that's a great expense to undertake, and so if there was a competition in Morro Bay, in being in the first position, as far as being the first tier of subcontractors, wanted the water, but somehow it wasn't deemed that, I mean, is Los Osos just going to not take the water in that situation, even though they've spent all this, gone through this huge drastic effort to create the pipeline? I mean, that seems like it's not very likely. I mean, why would they go to that extreme if they don't get first choice of the water?
Thank you for that question, and Wes, you could jump in here, but I don't see any competition scenario. The city of Morro Bay has contractual protections to receive up to 1,300 and 13 acre feet per year. If the Los Osos scenario played out, where they built the pipe to the Chor Valley Pipeline, then they can have some sort of agreement with the district, and the district would only be able to give them water where there's the capacity to do that outside of the 1,300 and 13 acre feet that Morro Bay's do. So there's not really, there's no competition there. The Chor Valley Pipeline was built with the idea that there would be water going to Los Osos. There was a turnout built into the pipe and at South Bay Boulevard in the 1990s. So this isn't, I'm going to be kind of blunt, but this isn't a new concept, it was built into the design of the pipe.
Well, it wasn't completed, and maybe they thought about it, but, so I'm just wondering, it seems like there might be, I mean, there's, you know, Chinatown, the movie, is all about water and the fight, fight over water. It's a big deal. I just would want to, it seems like a, like little steps towards a certain outcome, you know, in a drought year, I wouldn't want to risk Morro Bay's water portfolio in any way, shape, or form.
Thank you for that comment. I would say that one maybe piece of feedback we could give to the district board is that the policies don't allow the district to set up new subcontracts. If the subcontractors are the first priority, and Los Osos is not a subcontractor, then even in a situation where there may be competition, there's no competition because we're the priority. So maybe some feedback we could give to the district, you know, again, up to the city council, is that no establishment of new subcontracts, only water sales.
And then if all of this is being done for the city of Morro Bay and the county to have more flexibility with how they use their water and where they can sell it, then to me, that's, that means it's all about money, somewhat. And if we're thinking like that, then why would Morro Bay want to, I mean, it seems like, and Morro Bay's in the first position, it seems like Morro Bay would always want to get more than they can even use, because then they could sell it.
There potentially could be a strategy where Morro Bay plays broker and grabs more water than we need in order to turn it around and sell it. That depends on how the subcontractors would be negotiated. That would certainly be something to consider. That's essentially what the county can do now, that they have more water than they have to give to subcontractors, and they can turn it around and sell it. They did that last year. Do you want to comment on that?
You know, these are some great questions. And speak to or relate to other procedures, program, process that has yet to be developed. These policies are intended to provide the framework for those future processes and procedures that we would go through to identify, you know, how to prioritize the water, what criteria need to be evaluated before the district board approves any changes. And so these policies would inform both. And so these policies would inform both the future program for conducting the movement of water amongst the agencies, users within the county, but also future water management strategies, future cost, how the district would consider future cost recovery opportunities to make sure, to try to keep this an affordable water supply for all of our communities here within the county. And then also to consider what kind of future contract changes would be needed to improve your abilities as subcontractors to manage the water supply to meet your needs. Because Morro Bay's needs may be different than Los Sosos' needs. Los Sosos may wish to use state water to recharge, help with recharge in their basin, and they may only need to take it every once in a while, whereas Morro Bay uses it differently currently. And one of the major points that we're trying to emphasize in these policies, maybe we're not doing it enough, is that the reliability of this water supply for the subcontractors is paramount. So any future consideration on where this water would go has to be done under careful consideration that it does not harm communities like Morro Bay. The district has an obligation to do everything it can to protect the reliability of this water supply. And the state is committed to that as well. So I'm proud to be part of the state water project system that's serving Morro Bay.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, you had a, pardon me, you had a discussion with Mr. Diadati. There's just a, I'm sensing a general uneasiness about this amongst the council, myself included. One of the options is, at this point, not sending the letter of support, maybe the, some of the suggestions that you could garner from this conversation, but what would be, and I'd like input actually from both of you, because you had a discussion with Mr. Diadati, but Mr. Qualick, Director Qualick, what would be the implications or ramifications of, at this time, us not sending that letter of support? I wouldn't want to put Morro Bay in a bad light. We need to be sensitive about how we interact with the other agencies in the county and with the, with the board of supervisors. But what would be the implications if we just, if we didn't send it at this point? And it's, we're not saying no, we're just not sending it at this point.
Thank you for the question. I would say, it depends what we mean by that. If we just sort of stay neutral on it, I don't know that there would be any implications. And I just got an agreement from Wes on that. If we send it as neutral, but, you know, raise some concerns through feedback, I guess it would just depend on the feedback. I don't get the sense that the county is necessarily waiting for our blessing, but they, they do want to, just as a due diligence measure, run it by all of the subcontractors, which they've done through the advisory committee that I'm on. And just as, on a personal level, I'm satisfied with the work that the district has done on it. However, I wanted to make sure that the council and the PWEB had a chance to take a look at it. There's a lot at play here, and these policies are a first step. So there's not that much at stake. So I would say probably not a lot of impact if we stayed neutral.
Thank you. And then I'd be interested in your, because that-
We're not committing to anything at this point. We're just, I think this is, this is a, I mean, I don't want to say a receive and file, and thank you for staying so long tonight. I think this is step one of an awareness level that the policies, there's an intent to change the policies because they're outdated, because the water laws, the water rights in the state of California have changed. This is my understanding when I, when I had this meeting. And if we're not using the water, the district's selling it, that, and again, I'm going to be protective, I don't want somebody to think I want to sell our water portfolio, but we're trying to hold the line for our rates for our water and sewer users right now. And if we're not using water, we're paying for it, we could sell it and get $160,000 put back into our account. That's money that helps us to afford to sustain that and not be doing these 218 votes that some of our neighbors around here are doing right now, and I'm thankful for that. And I think that we just need to do our due diligence as a city through this process, through the council, through PWEB, through, you know, Mr. Qualick and the board, and thank you again, to, to make sure the framework is representative of our community's desires and needs and our protections. And I think that's going to happen through this process. I don't think we're committing to anything right now. They're not, they're not even there.
Thank you. Well, the request is for a letter of support. I would, I would propose that we just send a letter with our, with our comments.
That we've received the item and-
Yeah, I just, because of the hesitations that have been expressed tonight, I just don't feel comfortable at this point sending a letter of support to the draft policy, but I would certainly like them to consider our input.
I agree. Thank you.
Councilmember Edwards. Okay, okay. I know, did you have anything you want to add?
So with that, I don't believe a motion is necessary. I think I have what I need.
Thank you. Thank you again for your time, I appreciate it.
We really do appreciate your input and your comments.
And, yeah, the more information we have through this process, the easier it is for us to share that in our communities. So thank you. Any future agenda items?
I would like to put Dog Beach on a future agenda item, please, the ramifications.
I'd support that.
Me too.
Yes, yes, support all the way down.
I have one. Oh, okay.
I'm waiting.
I would, I would think it would be a good idea to send a letter to the Coastal Commission about the restrictive covenants that eliminate the option of, to remind them of the options to, of landing in that area.
That's Dog Beach.
That would be Dog Beach.
Yeah.
Can we discuss that at all?
Have that conversation. Yeah. That's the same thing, Dog Beach, that's what he's asking for.
Mine's just more direct.
I think we should have discussion. That's just me, yeah.
Let's go.
We're adjourned.